Welcome to the June 10, 2025, BCC meeting in the Dufuniac Springs Boardroom. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate you. We have all of our commissioners in attendance, and I would like to ask Jason if he would please, is he over there? Please come up and lead us in the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Lord Jesus, we honor you today, and we thank you for your goodness, and we thank you for your word. Very early this morning, you dealt with me about this meeting, and the story in John, Chapter 8, came to my mind, where the scribes and the Pharisees brought a woman caught in the very act of adultery to you, and they were questioning you about whether they should stone her because the law says stoner. And you said, "He that is without sin among you, let him first cast a stone at her."
Amen.
And everybody was convicted in their conscience, and they went away one by one, dropping the stones out of their hand. And you dealt with me about somebody coming here to throw stones, and I pray that you would deal with their heart right now, God, and that you would help them, that everybody would drop stones right now, because I pray for unity all the time in this place, and we can't have unity when we have stones in our hand. And I pray, and I, right now, I'm going to repent for me, I'm going to repent for our county, Lord, forgive us for having stones in our hands, forgive us for tailbaring, forgive us for backbiting one another. We say we want this county to move forward, and we need your help to do it.
Amen.
And I just ask you, God, to come into this place, let your spirit touch every heart and every mind, and that the word of God will be free in this place, and that you would just give wisdom and understanding, Lord, and I rebuke any spirit that would try to hinder the work of God in this place. And I give you the praise and the thanks for it, and I ask it all in Jesus's name. Amen.
And all God's people said, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jason. I believe we have Ms. Rhonda Skipper in the audience. Rhonda, thank you. She is an elected official, our tax assessor. Thank you very much for being here. Are there any other elected officials in the audience? Seeing none? Okay. We have a couple of recognitions that we would like to share with you. So, Mr. Sunday, if you would like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, we have a couple of recognitions today. The first one is recognition of our exceptional customer service award winner for quarter one. Her name is Jennifer Anderson, and she's the Assistant County Veteran Services Officer. If I could have Ms. Jennifer and her boss, Wade, to come up. Ask Mr. Wilmuth if he would, I believe he's the one that actually recommended her for this award.
Absolutely, sir.
And we would ask him to say a few words about Ms. Anderson.
Well, it's an honor and a privilege to be here and be able to brag about a very special person that works for the county. Jennifer's been with the county for over 24 years, and she's been in the Veteran Services Department the entire time. So, this recognition, I feel, is probably long overdue. She is a rock star, not only in this community, but statewide. I mean, when we go to conferences, there are people flocking around to talk to her just to get a little bit of information from her, because we all like to share knowledge, just to give a little bit of points of what she accomplished. We had 100, she personally had 150 brand-new clients come in over the first quarter. She spent over 200 hours working on 136 different claims in order to process, to make life a little bit easier for our veterans and their families. And we're talking about dependency indemnity compensation, which is really a widow's pension. We're talking about pensions for veterans, homeless veterans. I mean, it's a multitude of things, and I can't do it without her. She is the consummate expert that's in the office. I have only been in that office for about two years now, and I tell you, every day, I sit down with her for about 10 minutes just to scratch a little bit more knowledge from her so that she can make me a better person and a better veteran service officer. So, Jennifer, thank you for everything that you do. This is well-deserved, and you should be honored today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We have a plaque for you. If you guys would just stand over there.
Do you like to say anything, Jennifer?
I just wanted to say, thank you for this. You know, we can't think of a better group of people that deserves more attention and our gratitude than our military veterans. So, it's my honor to work in this office. So, thank you so much.
I want to thank you personally, too. I know we talked about this before, but you've been here a long time, and the number of lives that you have touched and have helped is really astonishing. And thank you, and God bless you for helping our veterans. Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Secondly, our CFO, Ms. Melissa Thompson, and her team have achieved the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And this is a significant award that represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of governmental budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the entity had to satisfy nationally-recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity's budget serves in several areas, as a policy document, as a financial plan, as an operations guide, and as a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and in 14 mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. There are over 1,700 participants in the Budget Awards Program. The most recent budget award recipients, along with their corresponding budget documents, are posted quarterly on the GFOA's website, and award recipients have pioneered efforts to improve the quality of budgeting and provide an excellent example for other governments throughout North America. So, kudos to Ms. Thompson and her staff for doing such an outstanding job with the budgeting process. We have a plaque for them. Melissa, will you like to say something about your staff?
Commissioners, I want to, first off, I want to start with the beginning of the process, and thank y'all for providing us with the tools that it took to do this. When the board approved the Open Gov software, that gave us the tool that was necessary to set up to meet all those criteria. And from that, I want to thank my staff, because there was a lot of work that went into setting up the budget and setting it up with those awards criteria in mind. And to be honest, when we first applied for it, it was our first year, so the thought was, we'll find out what we're lacking, get the feedback, and then hopefully, we can get the award the next year. So, when we got it, the first time we submitted, it was a wonderful feeling. We've been waiting for that plaque, and it's been like waiting for our Christmas present to come in. So, I'm very proud. I've got this outstanding staff, and could not be more proud of all of them.
Would you go ahead and name each one of them for us?
I will. We have got Devin Payton. He's our finance manager. We've got Michelle Whitten. She's our budget analyst. Summer Alford is not here. She is our TDC budget analyst. And we actually have an intern in our office. I believe he came with them. We've got Cooper Douglas, who, he has been, as far as the intern goes, he has been wonderful, and he is catching on really quickly. So, we've got a great team.
Wonderful, wonderful. Would you all like to come up? We'd like to get a picture with all of you. Don't be shy. We'll start with Jennifer first, and come on, we're going to go take some pictures.
Okay, if everybody will turn and face me, that's the price you have to pay. Big smiles, three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Your hard luck.
Thank you. Of course, thank you.
Oh, got it, everybody. Okay, big smiles, and then three, two, one. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Okay, now, the meeting is called to order. I have to ask you, last week in my office, we got a phone call from the clerk's office, and what they said was, when they were trying to type up the minutes for the meeting, that they really had trouble because there were so many people in the audience talking. So, if you could please refrain from talking in the audience. If you do need to, I'd ask that you step outside. That way, that we can make sure that we get these things, we get them correct and accurate. Anyway, so I appreciate if you can hold any applause, any talk, any chatter in the audience. So, thank you very much. Okay, we need to consider any additions or deletions, Mr. Sunday?
You go start yours, and then I'll add mine, because I've got one more to change. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two or three additions and a couple of deletions. The additions, let Mr. Atkinson address his. Under Commissioner Drake, add number two is county attorney position. Add number three is anonymous performance review and evaluation survey of all five commissioners conducted by all Walton County staff and employees. Deletions are items 20 and 21, both under human resources. 20 being a presentation from the Gearing Group on self-funded Florida Blue Health Insurance Option Financial Data, and 21 being requesting approval to move forward with establishing self-funded health insurance plan for next fiscal year. Sean, our consultant with Gearing Group, had a medical emergency and could not be with us, so we decided it best to pull that off and bring it back at the next meeting.
And thank you, Madam Chair. I have one addition under the Acton County Attorney title. Joiner in replat for Preserve at Grayton Beach Greenway will be the first to add on. And then I would ask the board to delete item 22 under planning, CASA-Magnolia update. We have had extended conversations with the developer and their attorney about a resolution of that matter, and I am hopeful that I will be able to present to the board a written agreement that will resolve this matter in full. And in abundance of caution, I don't believe it appropriate to address it until we have that back before you. So, I would ask for that to be deleted.
So, you'll bring it back to the next meeting?
I will.
Okay.
Motion to approve the agenda with the additions and deletions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the, to remove, amend with the additions and deletions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so, we need, any public comments? If you're not going to be here for when an item is coming up, and you would like to speak to it, you're welcome to come up now. Is there anyone that has anything that they would like to speak to that they will not be here for? Okay, seeing none? Okay. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'd like to move item 11 for discussion.
Okay. Item 11, that's under HR, request to approve the recommended changes to the HR policy manual. Okay, so, we will remove that for discussion, and you want to put it under your name?
That's fine.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the one exception.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda with the one change, to remove the one item and place it under Commissioner Curry's name. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. So, now, we are at citizen's request. Mr. Sunday, would you like to take that?
Yes, I believe Mr. Vinker was supposed to be with us last meeting and cannot, but if he's with us today, Sam Vinker, Sam Vinker. Mr. Vinker.
Not here.
I don't see him. I mean, I, no one's...
Going once, going twice. Okay. We'll move on to item number 13. That's Ms. Eileen O'Sullivan, also a citizen request. Ms. Sullivan has an issue with accessory dwelling unit short-term rentals.
Let me remind you, too, that under citizen's request, that it's not a question-and-answer time, but it's an opportunity for you to present so that we can take it from there.
No, sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Do you want our packet?
Do you have one that you, if you would pass it to the clerk, that'd be great.
Not very well experienced in doing this here, okay? So, please bear with me.
It's okay. It's all right.
I wrote it down. Okay, the goal for us coming here today is ultimately be able to rent our carriage house, short-term rentals, after this meeting, okay? We've met with all of you, all the commissioners separately, and have discussed our situation. Oh, sorry.
Sean and Eileen O'Sullivan?
Okay.
Do you need our address?
No.
Okay.
Sean, S-H-A-W-N.
The correct way. All right. Myself and my wife, we're both retired, okay, and we're full-time residents in our home. Okay, we've been homesteaded since 2021. The ADU, the carriage house, has been excluded from that homestead by the appraiser's office, and we verified this multiple times, okay? We live at 259 Barton's Way, which is Santa Rosa Beach. It's in the Preserve at Grayton Beach HOA. HOA allows short-term rentals. Approximately a third of the community is a short-term rental, houses, okay? There's a few carriage houses, but we're not talking about those. HOA covenants have no restrictions on carriage houses or short-term rentals. We purchased our land, built a home with a carriage house. Carriage house is 461 square feet. It's not tremendous. It's made for two people, okay? Completed it in 2019. Since 2020, we've paid all required county and sales taxes regarding our rental. We're registered with the DBPR, and I'll have to tell you, there are hundreds of carriage houses on 30A that are being short-term rented. Majority, if not almost all, the owners are not present, okay? There's very few that we know of who the owners are present like us. 2022, when the short-term rental ordinance was being established, our HOA was involved with speaking with them, the people setting it up, and we actually discussed with them the status of the carriage houses. We were told the Land Development Code was being updated, and we should know by November that year. November came, we didn't hear anything. We spoke to them again, and they said it's still being worked on. 2023, the short-term rental ordinance was passed and included exemptions. Now, if you're going to take a look, it's under the green tab. I mean, I'll have to... Number two says, "A single-family attached or detached dwelling occupied on a full-time basis by owner as an on-premise permanent resident, and has been declared and continues to be declared as a homestead." We believe this addressed the problem, the question we had, so we continue on. Okay, let me see. Everything was fine until around February 2025. We received a code violation for ADU rental and advertising. Might be in time, though, sorry.
You're fine.
Okay, because I'm not going to make that. We've never had a complaint about our, from our neighbors regarding any rentals in our carriage house, and it's not rented every day. It's, you know, periodically. We were told to stop all rentals, which we did, and to remove any advertising. To the best of our ability, we did. All calendars were blocked. We met with planning in April of '25, April 7. At the meeting was Matt Carpenter, Brooke Davis, Joshua Allen, and also an attorney we brought with us because of the code violation. That's the only reason we had an attorney with us. We asked why they felt we were not in compliance. We thought we were, because another neighbor in the community had received an email regarding a code violation of his ADU, and in that email, it was a mention, "Oh, the O'Sullivans are not in compliance." So, like, what are we doing wrong now, okay? They stated we were still advertising our carriage house. Even though the calendars were blocked, that was not sufficient. We had to remove all reference of our carriage house from the internet, which, as you guys know, is pretty vast, okay? We were not allowed to have any personal information or contact information on internet related to the carriage house. So, we did as best as we could. Okay, we did that. They provided an option, sorry, I'm saying it right now. They stated one option is, you guys could move out of your main house, there's only two people and two golden retrievers, that's all we have in the main house, to the carriage house, and rent the main house for a short-term rental. Carriage house can sleep anywhere from 16 to 22 people?
No, house, house, house.
On paper, the main house, sorry. Can sleep anywhere from 16 to 22 people on paper.
Right.
I'm not saying we would, but we have adequate parking. Okay. We asked, what was the issue about renting an ADU? They stated it was an infrastructure issue. This alone didn't make sense to me, because at most, I'd have two people in the carriage house, plus two in the house, four people compared to probably...
Enough people.
We asked Matt Carpenter if there's any plans on addressing the rentals of ADUs in the county. He said, absolutely not. Okay, there's no plans. April 14 to '25, seen another code violation, a nice sign planted in the front of my yard for all the neighbors to see with a magistrate date. Contacted code compliance, we said, what's going on now? We got another report that you're advertising. Like, where? Give us the websites. We don't know them. We don't have anybody here. These are white websites we weren't aware of. They were connected with other sites, so we did our best. We got them taken down. My wife also had a 30A vacation blog page. They said, gotta get rid of that, too. Can't have anything out there. We took care of everything, verified it with code compliance, and they sent us an email saying that, "Your case is closed. You're good," which is, we've been there since then. Brings us to May of 29th of '25.
May 27.
Oh, sorry. People we know on, you know, 30A, involved in rentals, showed us, told us Seaside just got permission to rent ADUs in their community. I remember back to Matt saying, there's no plans for ADUs anywhere in the county, not Seaside, not anywhere else. That's the pink tab in there is that email. You guys are probably familiar with that. Also, we see from an acquaintance of ours, an email that Joshua Allen sent out indicating this, okay?
It was sent to management companies on 30A?
Right.
And it's not posted anywhere publicly?
Yeah, the only way we knew about it is because of this acquaintance. They said, oh, I got an email about this, because they have rentals in there, apparently. Our request here is actually, we want the same privilege that Seaside was provided, and we believe other neighborhoods are working on also, okay? We're a small operation. Seaside, by far, they're not owner-present like we are, okay?
I understand. I understand, yes.
Mr. Ankin?
No, I got one from Mr. Ankin. Mr. Ankin, can, by state statute, can we legally be doing any of this?
So, that's something we've been looking at since the O'Sullivans first spoke to some of the commissioners. I know, I've spoken to several of the commissioners about this. I had the opportunity to speak to the O'Sullivans with two of the commissioners. We reviewed it. So, in your code, 2.0200 defines accessory dwelling unit and includes a reference that they may not be used as a short-term rental. Now, I can't find that inclusion going back further than 2018, but I will admit, I've not started digging back through everything going back to 2011. If that ordinance was passed post-2011, we are preempted from doing so. I've similarly reviewed the guidance and provided the planning so they could start looking at this issue as well, notwithstanding the issue, I would say, the Seaside, Alice, those are slightly different issues, given the nature of the DRI, the community, the development orders. But I will note that the Attorney General's been called upon to address similar issues of dwelling units and vacation rentals as recently as 2018. And the Attorney General indicated that a municipality could legally prohibit an accessory building from being used as a sleeping facility because it did not constitute a dwelling unit. The fact that we define these as dwelling units is what troubles me. If these are dwelling units under local law, which they appear to be, then it would appear to me that we cannot legally restrict it. Now, I've yet to find indication. I've been told that we don't rent out dwelling units, and that predates the LDC, but I have no ordinance that shows me that at this point in time. The fact that the most recent version of this was 2018 and has been amended a few times since then, including 2019, '21, '22, and '23, suggests to me that it is entirely possible we cannot do so. What my recommendation to staff at this point in time, based on the lack of any guidance that we have from our code and the opinions of the Attorney General, is that the code violations that are currently in place be abated until such time that staff can formally make a determination, and I would, and that needs to come from the planning director, not me, unfortunately, that accessory dwelling units are either prohibited by an ordinance predating 2011, or they are not. If they are not, we cannot prohibit them. That's the simple basis of preemption, but I don't believe that, given, after these people came in and talked, that merely a day or two later, I believe it was, a letter was issued granting Seaside complete ADU authority while we were doing this. That's a concern. And I'll also note my other basis for the request on the abatement of the code proceeding comes to the statement, "Stop renting it out and stop advertising it." I think, stop advertising it, considering what I read in the notice of violation, may well have been appropriate. I don't know that we actually have the ability, as part of a code violation, to say, "Stop renting it out." There's no doubt, we can't do through the magistrate what we couldn't do through ordinance. So, if that was their remedy to stop doing it, I think that's where we need to go with this issue. Basically, staff can take direction unless the board tells us their position is, you want us to try to block ADUs, or somebody on this board has something that tells me that ADUs predate 2011 or banned. I just, I've not found anything that says the county was doing this level of STR regulation prior to 2011, and we've looked quite a bit, because that's the magic cutoff date. So, we'll continue to look, but I think these people deserve an abatement until such time that we can finalize that. That keeps them on a consistent level playing field.
That means I can go back to advertising and renting legally and submitting my taxes.
That means that you won't be having to, any issues with code as far as fines and things like that, correct?
Give us two weeks, is what I'd ask, ma'am.
We'll bring it at the next meeting.
If you'll give us two weeks, we'll have an answer for you. Get us through this week. By the end of the following week, we'll have something back before the end of the next board meeting.
Okay.
That'll give us an opportunity to do the reviews that we need to, and to coordinate and make sure that we do the right thing.
I'm comfortable saying right now, we can't stop them, but I want to make sure we've reviewed every possible ordinance one way or the other on that issue.
I know you, I know you want to get this thing going, and I understand that completely, but if you would give us two weeks.
Yeah, I'll give you two weeks.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I agree with what Commissioner, I mean, Clay's saying and what you're saying. And I met with these people. They're very nice people, and they're very restrictive on who they rent it to, but it makes no sense to me that they can live in the carriage house and rent the house, but they can't live in the house and rent the carriage house.
I agree 100%.
I mean...
And for what it's worth, the Attorney General also agrees with that logic. And for what it's worth, the Attorney General also agrees with that logic, and that's the basis of their opinion, which is what gives me a great deal of pause about our interpretation here.
I agree with you to say that 16, or that two people in a carriage house impacts negatively infrastructure, but 22 people in the regular house, that just doesn't make any kind of sense.
And we do have five carriage houses in the neighborhood, so, yeah.
Different, they're not yours, right? They're just different people.
Only one home, and this is it.
Yeah. If you'll give us two weeks, I think we'll have it straightened out.
Or less.
Or less.
Okay.
Yes, or less.
Just add one more thing, and it's not, I go on to say if there's no issue to solve this right here, blah, blah, blah. I've given to all of you when we met, a draft ordinance proposal. If that's the only way to do this, if we cannot do it as Mr. Atkins said, we request that to be reviewed for possible approval.
Future.
Absolutely.
Which is only for owner occupied, homesteaded.
Right, absolutely.
We're not talking about it for us, it's just for someone like us.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Clay, how long would that take if we just went ahead and hashed it out, put it in the code, made it crystal clear, and then there's no dispute going forward? How long would that take to correct?
So if, so if what I'm intending is to solve their issue for them and to have back at the next meeting a proposal that would eliminate 2.0, excuse me, 2.02.00 sub B, sub 3, sub C, that reads the accessory dwelling unit shall not be available as a short-term vacation rental, it's a one-line deletion from your code, that can be done within 10 to 20 days based on advertising.
Madam Chair. Can we just go that route and fix it?
I'll wait.
We can do that right now. If you give me direction and the board, you can't take action at this point, give me direction and authorize me to advertise a public hearing for adoption at your next board meeting, and we'll get it advertised.
So done.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to advertise this and have it at our next meeting, correct?
Absolutely, I'll have it back.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Clay, is this part of the, where you have to have two public hearings and all this stuff, and we can just have the one?
It's a single. It's a 10-day notice, a single advertisement.
Okay, any other comments?
Because it's not changing the specific zoning categories, it's changing a definitional section.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone from the, yes.
Alan Osborne, for the record. What's disturbing to me about this, besides the O'Sullivan's, is the letter that went out. If you've read the letter, it makes an assumption, a statement, an administrative decision. It's really, for the citizens, it's kind of nuts for us to hear somebody tell somebody that something that they built five years ago needs to be shut down for lack of infrastructure, and somebody totaled it up online, it's like, you got 6,500 units coming online. Look, y'all can mobility fee it all you want. All you did was change proportional fair share to something called mobility fee, and we still ain't got no room or land to build it, and God hadn't created no more beach, he's not created no more barrier island, and all you're doing is putting money in the sky for land that you don't have a solution to make on. But you should not just fix this for them. You should investigate what just happened because on its face, this, I've been here a long time. Seaside was built as a neighborhood, not as a rental. It was a neighborhood community. It was an experiment, and they put it all over the world about what it was. It had a neighborhood community school. That's not what you build intentionally. It became a rental, and it was a good investment for people, and surely it's beautiful. But in one day, somebody made a determination that's different from what 40 years of advertisement said. And that should concern you to no end because that person wasn't elected to legislate things or make decisions without due process, and that's what occurred, in my opinion. So you took a letter that somebody just, as they were walking out the door and blanketed something, and this type of interpretation is going to keep this county in lawsuits because those people had a loss for, as Clay pointed out, no good rea, if there's not something there, then they issued that and imposed the punishment, and who did the research? Nobody. But to tell anybody that you're shutting down something for lack of infrastructure while it seems to have the throttles set on military power setting as we move forward, and like I said, for the last time, I just don't think you hear people, there's no more South Walton being built. No land, no beach, and if anything happens, Mother Nature will shrink the beach. They will, God's not going to come in here and give you Cape Hatters and a quarter mile of beach. It's not happening. But the process to, and I see other things on this issue, but with this, I think a full audit of what has happened in planning and code and what letters have been sent out, if y'all go back and remember, some of you back to the Hiddinger letters back, how that's how we ended, Clay brought up how we ended in court, can we not repeat the process that put us in court 15 years ago because some of those same problems exist?
Thank you. I don't disagree that we need to look at a lot of different things, and I think, Stephen, that you are moving in the right direction with things, so thank you. Anyone else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, quick update on the Planning Department. Mr. Shawn has been appointed as the interim planning director. We are working diligently, and we hope that your complaints have lessened somewhat in regards to single-family building permit reviews. And we are also, Mr. Trewick and I are trading out some time in the planning office in Freeport as we move forward and attempt to fill that position. We're currently receiving applications, and we will be doing interviews in short order.
You were talking about an operational audit.
Yes.
Did you have anyone in mind?
Was fixing to move into that. This item is a request to approve an operational audit of the Planning Department and its fees. I think it's been, well, I know it's been quite some time since we have taken a look at the recreational fees, the mobility fees, the proportionate fair share fees, sidewalk buyout fees, and preservation fees. Being in between leadership in the Planning Department, I think that it is a good time to take a look at these fees, take a look at the process by which we calculate these fees, as well as how they are collected. So we are requesting approval of that operational audit.
Motion to approve.
Say.
We have a motion and a second. I'd just like to add that I have already started, to some degree, with a public records request to get information on those exact fees you're talking about from January of last year to present and from, to compare it to what was actually paid. So that information should be coming to me anytime, so that will be a starting place. So once that information is gathered, I can share that with you, you can share it with them, and then they can go deeper and longer, but I'm glad to see that happen. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Yes, Mr. Roark.
Todd Roark, she keeps moving. First and foremost, thank you. We need to have an independent investigation. This investigation cannot be done by mom and pop of Walton County or Florida. It needs to come from New York. It needs to be one of the big four. Deloitte Consulting Company, which is an accounting audit company that should do this independently so that they can do internal and external across everything and dig deep into this. I just don't think anyone in the community is going to believe anything unless it's done by one of the big four. Otherwise, it's a waste of time, money, and effort because it's just not going to be adopted. We're finding things about, over the last couple of decades, that's been, that these things haven't been collected ever, and I like to ask our CFO. The CFO owns every single financial control in any organization, to include the county. Did they bypass Melissa, the CFO, in this latest example of the $775,000 not being paid or she not knowing that it was a land transfer versus the payment of the fee and hearing that these fees haven't been collected correctly for years and years, at least since this mobility fee thing came up? And I'll be honest with you, I don't understand the application, the calculation, appropriation, or the payment of it. But at the end of the day, what I do understand is the county citizens, and you guys as well, were short-changed, potentially, over $1 million between 775 and over $300,000. I don't know how that applies, but I just don't understand from the CFO standpoint, why, how, she's the gatekeeper of everything financial in this county, and how they bypassed her. We need to know that. We deserve to know how Matt Carpenter or anyone inside this county government or outside this county government was allowed to do that continually. We deserve the answers. And if they bypass CFO process controls, we have a huge problem. So hire Deloitte, or KPMG, or ENY, or Ernst &amp; Young, and do it. Otherwise, you're wasting your time, money, and effort. That's just my two cents coming from where I come from. It just.
I agree, we need to make sure that we have a good.
Why, how this got passed are financial controls. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. The goal is to find out how bad it is. I hope that it's not as bad as, I'm afraid it might be. Randy?
I have a question.
Yes, you're recognized.
How was this discovered?
I discovered this because I was watching the meeting, and I read the article in the paper about it, and I called Melissa and I asked her how much money they had provided us and how much money was due. And she told me how much money was due, and when I looked at the documents that showed how much money was due and then found out that that money had not been paid, and according to our documents, it states on the form that the money is to be paid prior to going to the BCC Board. And it was not paid prior to going to the BCC Board. The more I looked, the more I talked to Matt Carpenter and found out that they did a hybrid, which has never been done before, and it just kind of snowballed. I didn't expect it, you know? I didn't know it was happening, but when I found out what was happening, I was extremely upset about it.
My question is, is how is it bypassing the CFO's office?
There is no, from what I understand, from planning and what's on that document with what the developer owes, and when it gets to finance, there's no checks and balances. There's no way, there's no mechanism in place right now that says this developer owes a million dollars. That's not necessarily what information she gets, so that's where our disconnect is.
And I agree. I don't know the term bypassing the CFO is a proper style there. The issue that we're finding, and I do want to say this, while the county's had rec plat fees for a good while, mobility fees are our first real foray into impact fees on a large scale. With that being said, building a system between when it's collected, when it's approved, the amount, and that check and balance is something we absolutely have to engage in. It is not something that appears right now where all sides of the house are connecting on that to making sure it's done. And that's not necessarily a bypass. It's a situation where the CFO is just not directly included in the process. As long as they're receiving the money and planning, you know, how does that get back to her? And this is no, and I will say, that is not an uncommon issue that many local governments find after dealing with an audit. I imagine it would be an audit finding we would have dealt with in the near future as those monies grew, and then we put in a better and more efficient method of it. So to that extent, we will certainly continue to work on that. I know that Ms. Thomason's been in conversations, we've had conversations with the clerk about the mobility fee, and we're definitely looking at how that's collected, how it's administered, when and how we determine it, and more importantly, when we get that sign off that everything's been done properly so that we don't miss our last window to collect.
But I do hope.
Don't we need to put out an RFP for one of the large accounting auditing firms?
I believe with this. I believe we can start with quotes, and also I would like to see if the board, how far back do you want to go? Do you want to start with October 1st of this year and see what the first nine months looks like of the year, and then go back further?
Well, what I had started was, on my request that I did a couple of weeks ago, was starting January 1st of 2024 to present, and I thought, based on the results of that, if it's as bad as it could be, then go back further. That was what I, was my initial thought.
Probably need to go back to at least when Sandestin was built.
We can start with quotes and go to Formobid.
Excuse me.
I can't talk.
Wait a minute. Wait, all right. Let me, did you have something to say? Mr. Sunday?
We were just talking about the date the mobility fee actually began to be collected has to at least be included in the date range. Whether you go further back or not, it's a different question, but you have to capture that date.
Right, right, okay. But can you also go out to one of the big companies and ask?
We can issue the solicitation, and I'll be honest with you, I will, we'll put it out where everyone can see it, we'll make sure the big four see it. Even Miami-Dade does not have an audit by a big four firm. You just don't really see it very often, but we will make sure that they get that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Thomason, that's going to take some time though, isn't it?
If we formal solicitation, yes.
Isn't there a, some, a firm, our firms on state contract that we could engage immediately and at least tell us where to start?
We could reach out to Maximus Consulting. They do our cost allocation study. They are on state contract. The state uses them for quite a few engagements.
Well, how about if we do something like that, and based on what they find, if we need a bigger company than, and because it'll be a larger area timeframe that we'd be going for, then we could go for a larger company.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We can do that, and if I'm understanding correctly, it would not just go back to October 1st of this year. We'd probably kick it back one more year to make sure to capture all the mobility fees.
Yes, that would be great.
Madam Chair. After Randy talks, I'd like to say something.
Go ahead and say it.
All right. This was going to be on one of my agenda items, but since we're talking about the mobility fees, when did we actually start collecting the mobility fees? When was it approved and we started collecting?
I believe it was July or August of last year. I have to go back and look at the exact date.
It had been the fall when the collection started. We passed the ordinance months before, then we passed the implementation, but I believe we started collecting after August 1 of 2024. The exact date, I can't specify.
Stephen, do you know?
Oh. Can I just sit down and come back?
Yes.
Sorry, Randy.
So the mobility fee, the schedule and the ordinance was adopted in December of '23. There was a 90-day period before we could implement. We started implementing in April of last year.
Okay, so my next question is, when did the mistakes in collecting start happening?
Probably immediately.
He said, when did the mistakes in collecting?
Immediately through, the first day.
From the first day through January the 17th, I believe, and after that, our office started checking them.
And we don't actually know how much we've lost?
It was right at $10,000, and it was.
As of today, you told me something like, you just found another one today.
It was 90, we found another one. We have gone through them. Now, we are going back through again to make sure that we did not miss anything because they are not as simple of calculations as I would have thought, but right now, we're right at $10,000.
Well, I know, including myself with the mobility fee, I've asked Clay a couple times, what is the process? I mean, who approves it? I'm assuming that, you know, there's three key people up here, you, Stan, Clay. So planning and engineering and all that falls under Mr. Stan. So where did we mess up with this? I mean, why didn't we, we knew an outgoing department head was leaving a month in advance. We have a planning person that came from planning as an administrator in there. My question is, why didn't we put that person? Because in the private world, when somebody's leaving, even on good terms, they get a short-timer disease. That's when complacency happens, that's when mistakes happen, maybe not knowing, maybe knowing. But you would, as an admin or someone above those departments, you would put somebody in there to mirror that person. those departments, you would put somebody in there to mirror that person, just to catch those Ts that didn't get crossed and those Is that got dotted. Well, we didn't do that. And shame on us for not having any kind of plan in place for that. I hope going forward, we do. So that's my comments. And last thing, Clay had gave me an example, and I wanted him to kind of, I don't know, talk about it. Because you got a county road that surrounds like a municipality, and I'd like to know how we get the mobility fees out of municipalities when it's a county road, so on and so forth. So if you wouldn't mind, Clay, could you reiterate on that?
Can we just wait on that under, since you said you've got it under your name?
Well, that was my last question.
So that's your last one?
On that topic.
As long as it's not...
That'll be you, Madam Chair.
As long as it's not too long.
You're asking a lot of me now, Madam Chair, with all due respect, but I'll do my best. So do you have an interlocal agreement? And it's important to note that the state has effectively mandated interlocal agreements for collection of impact fees related to specifically traffic mobility, where you could have a municipality and the county both assessing a fee. So we're supposed to have an interlocal. We've had an interlocal in effect. We made it in under the statutory timeframe. We're right now assuming that interlocal stays in effect and is not amended, revoked, or otherwise. We're not in danger of any of the statutory penalties of it not being in effect October 1, such as the developer being able to use his own study and us having to take it and give him a discount on top. But the moral of the story is that the county is allowed to treat the entire county map, irrespective of municipal boundaries, as the entire county road system. So the question is, do you collect money legally on a road? It doesn't matter whether it's in a city or not. It doesn't matter if you call it a county-owned road, city-owned road, county-maintained, city-maintained. The county has the exclusive authority, based on their local agreement, to collect on every traffic facility that's legal. Now, the concern, and I will just jump ahead and I'll sum this very quickly, and probably taking up for Stephen here a little bit as he stands there at the podium, planning's asked to do a lot of these calculations, but 163.3180 makes it very clear. Like all impact fees, it is on new growth. You don't get to charge an impact fee to deal with maintenance, to deal with standard repairs. So when you relate that to mobility, the statute says you cannot assess and collect a fee on a development because it is impacting an already deficient roadway. So your example you asked me about was County Road 83A, otherwise known as Bay Loop Road. County roads, city limits affected by city projects. Well, the question is, is Bay Loop deficient right now? If it is deficient by language of the statute, there's a definition of traffic deficiency, which counts actual committed invested trips plus background trips plus census database trips and economic base beta data. You can't collect on that. So that's an engineering question. That's the reason why we have the engineer operating under those interlocals. But that's something we've got to work forward with, quite frankly, because planning's calculating it on one hand. But I think Mr. Schoen's probably going to sit up there and tell you, when you start getting into what constitutes traffic deficiency and actual invested trips, that's probably more of an engineering question in most cases than it's a pure planning question. And so that's another thing we're going to have to work through. We've just never done this in the county before with impact fees. And so just because a big project comes in, if it's in the cluster of a bunch of already deficient roadways, we may not be collecting a fee at all. I want the board to be aware of that. But that's going to be based on the state statutory definition. So as quick as I can make it, Madam Chair.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. So basically, what I heard out of that partially is that our engineers should be the ones to calculate rather than the planning department? Is that part of what I got?
I think they have to be intimately involved in the process. Stephen, do you disagree with that?
I mean, according to our adopted ordinance, it's within planning's realm. The interlocal speaks differently. And to Clay's point, it speaks to the, I believe, the statutory requirements more so than the...
Correct. The interlocal tracks the statute closer than the original version of the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. Did you have something to say?
I did. I just wanted to address a couple of things if I can.
Certainly.
So there are processes for our fee collection, for every fee that we collect. There's certain fees that are collected during a development order review. There are certain fees that are collected during plat approval, right? So a development order goes through a process where it's calculated by the planner, the project manager. It goes to our internal finance technician. If those two numbers agree, it goes off to finance for a third review and approval. Once that approval is come to and agreement's made there, then we release our development order, subject to payment of those fees, if they're plat fees or other, you know, fees that are assessed or collected later. There's plenty of fees, sidewalk buyout, preservation, things like that, that have to be collected, or that we do collect at development order review. Whatever fee is agreed upon by the staff, and that's what's collected. There's, once that's taken care of, it's a done deal. Dedication of land, things like that occur before DO issuance. That's not changing after that. Plat rec fees, the mobility fee, those are impact, well, they're impact fees by definition. Those can be paid all the way at the end of the process prior to CO. There were some issues with the collection of mobility fee at CO, so we addressed that by collecting them during the building permit review. So it's not reliant upon the permit for that payment. So again, I just wanted to put that out there. I can answer other questions as it relates to our processes and collection, if you have any.
Are we putting that clearly in our land development code that states exactly when you collect different things? I mean, so there's no questions asked?
I believe it's, the detail is probably in our policy documents for the rec fee and those sort of things. There certainly mention of the fees within the land development code, but the actual when it's collected and things like that, I think are spelled out in our policy documents.
Mr. Schoen, who actually collects the money?
The planning department.
At the planning department?
That's correct.
And then you send it to finance?
Well, it goes into the associated account, whatever planning area or municipality that development was in, it goes, we have several separate mobility fee accounts. So wherever that mobility fee is being assessed, it goes into that account.
That is all.
Okay. Interesting. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you. I watched the TRC the other night, and your question before you gavelled the participant out was, was all fees collected. So I just want to thank you for stating that. You asked, and they answered yes. So thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, that really isn't something, something new, right? You know, it's something that we do. It's not always, you know, out in the open, but we certainly do. There's not any underhanded or other activities.
I just wanted to see how many have come before the board that we have not collected any fees on. I mean, we know of one because of a hybrid. But I'm just curious to see if there's any other ones that we have made decisions on, that the fees were collected after that, when the form states fees must be collected prior to BCC.
Right. That, I mean, the CASA project is an exception to the rule. But I certainly value an audit, you know, anytime. But that's important to go through.
Thanks.
And commissioners, if you don't mind, I'll go ahead and include in the scope, the, for the operational audit, to include the process of the funds from collection all the way to deposit. Because while we do verify some of these fees, we're just doing it through email verification of calculations. The funds are collected in planning and go straight to clerk's office for deposit. So if there's any opportunity for improving controls in the middle of that, we'll be happy to take those.
Okay, okay. That's a very, very interesting point.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, and the fees for the mobility fee are actually paid by the builder, correct?
That's correct.
Where the developer doesn't pay that fee, the builder does.
Right, right. But each...
Well, they can. It just depends.
Yeah.
But it's collected exclusively from the builder.
Well, it's collect, well, they know what the fee is pretty early on in the process. So a developer could technically prepay their impact fees to secure the whole project.
I'm talking about the mobility.
That's correct. That is an impact fee. The mobility fee is an impact fee.
The language says the developer pays it, correct?
So...
Tony, could you speak up?
So there's an option in our documentation, right? Until the impact's there, we can't collect the fees. That's why it's a building permit issue in CO. But there are agreement options in the ordinance that allow for the developer to come to the table ahead of time and pay for some of those fees, a portion of, or enter into an agreement with the county to allow for a return of that fee by other developments that come on that particular corridor, things like that. So it's not as cut and dry. But that's generally the idea is that the builder will be responsible.
It's due at the time of building permit, but not later than time of CO. That would almost always be the builder unless somebody chooses to prepay it in advance.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Randy? Thank you for waiting patiently.
I apologize. When I was up here, I was mostly talking to myself and forgot there was a microphone in front of me. Sorry about that. Randy Lightner, L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. I think I forgot in half of what I wanted to say. But one big question to me, this meeting discussing the hybrid, we need to know who was in that meeting.
I don't know who was in that meeting. Stephen may know. Stephen was in and out of that meeting. He wasn't in it continually. I think Matt Carpenter...
Who was in that meeting?
Stephen, would you like to come forward? I know that Matt Carpenter was in that meeting, and I believe Gary Shipman was in that meeting, and Stephen was in and out of that meeting, and I don't know who else.
I would ask if we could, given we are trying to work this out and the outcome is potentially litigation. It's not actual litigation, but they're definitely threatening litigation.
Yeah, that's right. What it is, is theft of my money, and I have the right to know. Let's please not do that. You owe that to us, Clay.
Ms. Lightner, I promise you'll be able to get answers to these questions.
We need them today.
I would very much ask that you give us an opportunity to make sure you get the money and the answers to your questions, rather than forcing this matter into protracted litigation that just delays the county getting any money whatsoever. So I would ask the public to be respectful, Madam Chair. It is not actual litigation. So it's to the board's call whether they want to get into it. That's why I had it pulled off the agenda.
It's honestly, I think it's going to be okay, Randy. The information will...
Okay, let me ask this. Let me ask this then. So we know that you were in and out, and not your fault. We know that Mr. Carpenter was there. We know that Mr. Shipman was there. Mr. Carpenter's boss, the person who can hire and fire Mr. Carpenter, was our county administrator. Is that right?
That's correct.
Was the county administrator present in this meeting?
I have no, I have no idea.
Or did he have any knowledge of the meeting? That we need to know today.
I have absolutely no idea.
Were you in that meeting, Stan?
Do you have any questions, Madam Chair?
Yeah. I don't know, Randy, if he was in that meeting. But I think that, I think that based on what he said about they're working a deal, and I'd like to be able to get that deal worked out so that we can get our money.
Sure. And I think, I think we all know sitting in this room, that if you weren't in a meeting, were you...
I'll answer your question. No, I was not.
Thank you very much. That's all you had to do. That's all I've wanted to know from the beginning, was if you were in that meeting or not, or had knowledge of that meeting.
No, I did not.
Thank you. Okay.
Did you have anything else?
That's, that's what I wanted to know, and that's what I wanted to be said out loud.
So I'm curious, what made you believe that he was?
You're recognized.
And yeah, it's, I accomplished my goal. Stan wasn't there. Stan said he wasn't there. That's what I wanted to know.
For my benefit, what made you believe that he was?
I didn't say I believed he was. I said I wanted him to say whether he was or was not.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. So I'm gonna, no, there was more I wanted to say, but given that answer, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Randy. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to speak to this? Seeing none? Okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chair, can we take a short break?
Madam Chair, can we take a short break?
Start up again.
Oh, I was wrong.
Okay, we are on item number 15. And Mr. Sunday, will you take that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We need some help in administration with real estate, and this request is for approval to advertise a solicitation for professional real estate broker services or some sort of, to attain some sort of buyer-broker services agreement. This will differ in relation to the previous agreement that we had that was based, the compensation was based on commission. This would not be structured the same way. We've worked with Melissa and her procurement team, and they believe that the best vehicle to put this out would be a request for proposals, so we're requesting your approval of that today.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments? No? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? Now that it's not on commission basis, I think that's much better than what it was before. So we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next up is an update and request for direction on GPS and county vehicles. This board directed us back on, I believe it was April 22nd, to do some research and bring back some numbers to be able to equip those vehicles with that apparatus. We've done that. The remaining 244 vehicles in the fleet that are not equipped with such today would be at a cost of $19.75 per month, for a total of, I believe the number's 50, just under $58,000 a year. So we would look for your direction on this, or if perhaps you would like to maybe allow me to work with the directors, respective directors of each department, and if they feel like they need this apparatus, then allow them to work with administration to procure that.
I think that's probably a better route to go, is let the director heads determine what they need, what their people need. And I think to Brian Kellnberger's point last week or so, he routinely tells his people that when they're driving in a county vehicle, that they're a billboard. So everyone knows that you're a county employee, and it is. It's like driving around with a billboard on there saying, "I'm a county employee." So the important thing is just to remember that, and to ask that you drive respectful and keep your vehicles clean and things like that. But that should be up to the directors to, you know, keep their people informed, and that's how I feel. I was the one that brought that up, because I know it's a 20% reduction on our insurance if we have that, but I believe that the feedback I've gotten is that people are uncomfortable with that. So rather than it be dictated from us, from my opinion is, I think it should be determined by the directors. What do you all think?
I agree.
I agree.
Okay.
So we will just communicate with the directors, and if they have that request and demonstrated need for that, we will work with them to accomplish that.
That'd be great.
Fit in the budget.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Did you have one other thing added to yours?
Yes, ma'am. Let's take up number 11, which was removed from the consent agenda by Commissioner Curry. It's a request to approve recommended changes to the Human Resources Policy Manual.
Did you want to...
I want to... Yeah. Break, if you can. Thank you, Terry.
Terry Frankspen, our HR guy?
Yes. Hi, it's Terry with HR.
Please just tell her your whole name.
Yeah, Terry Frankspen, with Walton County's Human Resources Department, HR Director.
Who's your bodyguards?
I have two gentlemen back here, Cody and Thomas, with Drug Free Workplace.
Okay.
Good deal. I just, really quick, I know we talked about this, and I touched base on it, I just wanted to publicly go over when it comes to randoms, who's included in that, and then once you say that, if what you're telling me is what I'm thinking, then I'm a done deal.
Yeah. So the number one concern I had coming on board, and this is also working with Cody, is our CDL operators, basically we're mandated by the state going back in 2020, that all of our drivers should basically follow up with a compliance mandate through a clearinghouse, which is a federal database, that all of our CDL operators go in, they register, they verify they have a CDL, and then they go into the, quote, the clearinghouse, and it's a database for highway patrol, driver's license, the state and our agency to basically make sure they're clean and clear and able to operate a vehicle. They don't have any prior history, DUIs or anything that would restrict, or maybe they're driving without a license. So that's the number one thing I want to get put into play. No idea why it wasn't done. We went back to 2012, and they were doing it back at that timeline, but the federally mandated timeline was 2020, and it was not put into play through the county. So we're going to do all of our CDL. We are also going to do our safety-sensitive positions, and those would be, an example, like a tram operator, they may not need to have a CDL because they only have 14 or less people in the vehicle, but it is a safety-sensitive type position. So those would be the other ones that would be part of the randomly generated list. I've been working with Drug Free Workplace. This is what they do for a living, so they would provide the list to Human Resources. There are some guidelines based on number of employees, number of CDLs, number of safety-sensitive. They would send us the list, and we would distribute it to the directors to get those tests administered, and the randoms done.
I like everything you just said. I just wanted to add, again, I bring up the private industry, because even though I was the vice president of purchasing for a paint manufacturer, I was included in the randoms. I feel that, I mean, maybe at this point, that's a little extreme, but I would say any office or anybody associated with a county vehicle needs to be placed in that random category. I don't know if that safety-sensitive includes that or doesn't include that, but that would include everyone up on those diocese, their aides. I think that covers everybody that's associated with a county vehicle, not just a CDL, but a county vehicle.
Okay. And I need to get an answer for you on that. There's like some Fourth Amendment stuff that has been put out. I know like the city of Key West had a lawsuit. I think Dufvignac Springs also had a lawsuit in terms of overregulating what you can do with drug and alcohol testing.
Is that the difference between county government and private entity?
It could be, yes, sir.
Because I know I just sent the chair and pushed the pencil, and I was on, I've got picked three times in a month for a random.
Well, it is. It's the Fourth Amendment. Obviously, the government is prohibited from unreasonable unlawful search and seizure. Obviously, a drug test is perceived as that. There's some 11th Circuit case law that's not necessarily true in the rest of the country, but specifically that governs us. And in fact, when Rick Scott was the governor, I mean, went all the way up out of the Department of Juvenile Justice about who can and cannot be subject to drug tests, and the 11th Circuit's opinion was very surprising to local governments. But we'll be glad to work forward on that and make sure we're not out of bounds.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a possibility for that, great. If he's at the max that he can do as a government, then I'm fine with it. But I mean, I just wanted to add that caveat that I think somebody driving in a county car getting an accident is just as bad as somebody in a truck with a CDL getting an accident. So, I mean, I think they all, we all need to be in a random at times. Do we not have a procedure when you first get hired? Do we not do drug tests when we first get hired?
We do for certain positions, not every position. It's illegal to do every position, but for most positions, we do.
I got a lot to learn, then.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for doing that, because I know that's quite a bit of information that you've included, and I'm glad that you caught that it should have been there since 2020, and now we've got it there. So thank you for that catch and for including it. Thank you very much.
We need to make the motion. I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? Yes, sir.
Warren Whitaker, W-H-I-T-K-E-R. Madam Chairman, thank you. My question for your HR manager would be this. I too was in the corporate world, and I drove a van every day. Forgot an accident, called the union rep, you went to the hospital, you took the test. If you were clean, you had nothing to worry about. Is that the same situation with you guys? If somebody on one of your county, even your little house cleaning people that I see stop at all the stores all the time, are they, if they got an accident, would the driver be tested?
Absolutely, yeah. Would you post accident? And, yeah, absolutely. Do post accident.
But you can do that.
Yes.
That doesn't violate any laws that I know of.
Reasonable suspicion in post accident.
Okay, very good. And what is your ruling on smoking in your vehicles, too?
Can't smoke.
Okay. Because I've seen a couple ladies ride around, they get out and the smoke just boils out of their cars.
Well, there's no smoking, no vaping, none of that's allowed in the cars.
All right, I'll tag them next time.
Thank you.
You have an issue.
Yes, sir, I will.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay, I believe we are at the engineering. Number 17.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll take the first one, and then Mr. Powell's going to take 18 and 19. This is Mossy Head Water Works. It's renewing their franchise agreement, currently a 30-year agreement set to expire in 2027. They have requested to renew that 30-year agreement with an addition to extend it to January 9th of 2057, and County Attorney's Office has reviewed it, and we are asking for approval of this franchise extension.
And Mr. Sunday, if we will, put on the record that at this point in time, the franchisee has complied with all terms and requirements of the franchise, to the best of our knowledge.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yes.
And we certainly have not noticed them of breach, and so it is their right under the franchise to exercise this option, provided they give us notice and they're in compliance with all of the terms. In the absence of others, it's Ministerial Act. We don't really have discretion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Chance. Chance Powell, engineering. Next item's number 18. This is a request to approve and authorize a chair to sign task order number 25-06 with Atkins for professional engineering services for the US Highway 98 and Driftwood Road Intersection Signalization Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed $232,828.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Okay. Number 19. Request to approve and authorize a chair to sign task order number 25-08 for CEI services for County Road 1883 improvements, Phase 1 project with Half &amp; Associates. Now, this says in an amount not to exceed, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. When this was transcribed, the numbers were transposed. It should read $347,381 instead of $374,381. $27,000 savings here we're getting right off the bat.
And DOT is paying for that?
Yes, ma'am. This is ARPA money.
Fantastic.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Anyone from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Sorry to keep you up here so long. Okay, 20 and 21 have been postponed. 22 has been postponed. We are at Public Works, number 23.
I'll take that. It's a request to approve and authorize the chair to sign Amendment Number One to Task Order 2401. This was for professional engineering services for the North Walton County roadway condition pavement assessment and asset inventory with Barge Design Solutions. They previously conducted this work through this Task Order 2401 and performed the pavement condition index. And as part of that exercise, they collected additional data that includes signage as well as guardrails. So they have the data. We can purchase that data at the cost of $96,913 and we believe that engaging another firm to start from scratch and provide this would be much more costly. So we would recommend approval of this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just wanted to highlight that I think this is a great idea to purchase this because what it does is if we have a storm or anything like that and the area is destroyed, this data will give us the information to show us exactly where the signs are that need to be replaced, exactly where the guardrails are and all of that stuff. And unfortunately, when we did this on the south end a couple of years ago, we got to the point where they did the work, but we didn't purchase the information and I kind of wish that we would have. But anyway, I do think it's a good thing. It's a lot of money, but I think it would be worthwhile. And so we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kellenberger, you want to make your way up? I suspect there'll be a question or two about this next item, which is a request to award invitation to bid 2503 for the Henry Park Visitation Center restroom and access remodel project to the lowest response bidder, Custom Home Shop. Request to approve and authorize the chair to sign the contract in the amount of $98,163.75. This is at Chipley Park and would be paid for out of the North Walton TDT.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Brian, would you tell us a little bit about it?
Yes, ma'am. This is a small visitor center on the north side of the lake. There was identified as a viable project for some North Walton Terrace Development Tax. So it's a basic remodel to turn two non-ADA bathrooms into one ADA bathroom, make the building ADA accessible, some new doors and interior finishes.
Fantastic. Any questions? Any comments from the board? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any comments?
Thank you very much.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brian, appreciate it. Okay, Melissa.
Commissioners, our next item is a recommendation from the Auditor Selection Committee and a request for direction regarding the fiscal year 25 financial statement audit and ancillary engagement. The current agreement with CRI for auditing services has the option to renew, subject to the annual review and recommendation of the Auditor Selection Committee, which is made up of the Board of County Commissioners, y'all had designated Stephanie Hoffhans the school district CFO, and designated from each constitutional officer. The committee met on May 19th and they voted to recommend renewal for the fiscal year 25 engagement, so we wanted to bring that back to you and see what the wishes of the board are.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve.
Their recommendation.
Their recommendation.
Their recommendation, okay, okay. But the one individual wasn't at that meeting, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Stephanie Hoffhans was not at that meeting. She had a medical emergency in her family that came up that morning, but if the board did decide to go out for a solicitation, she would be on the committee that would rank that.
Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Melissa. Mr. Atkinson.
Yes, ma'am. So we have before you the add-on item that is joiner and replat for preserve at Grayton Beach Greenway. This is likely the first time this board and probably many boards of county commissioners here for Walton County have seen something of this nature. In your packet, we've uploaded, or they were supposed to be uploaded to your packet, mapping systems for planning that was supposed, that would show you that we own a 1.5 acre parcel. And I'll be candid with you, we're not talking about a plat, it's not quasi judicial, doesn't really matter what that is, because we're not exercising governmental decision-making in a quasi judicial capacity. We own a 1.5 acre parcel outright, not a dedication to us. We were deeded this parcel outright. And this parcel, in the greenway that is over it, is part of an overall plat. There's been a request from Mr. Tatum, who you see there at the table, getting ready to come up here and talk, his client, to replat a portion of that plat. Now, you never see these because we don't own property in plats very often, at least not fee simple. We own dedications of land, but we don't actually own a lot. The way this works is for the dedication in the record plat statute, for a plat to be replatted, all owners who would need to execute a deed to convey clear title to that property of everything in there, has to sign off. There's no doubt we're one of those owners, so we have to sign off. Now, this came to the Planning Commission as a request for the actual replat, the quasi judicial proceeding. I believe that because the board is a property owner who have to sign off, the cart is before the horse if we hear the replat and we haven't said whether we join, because you have complete legislative discretion about whether to join in this replat or not. Now, that being said, there's going to be a lot of dispute over this. I'm going to save most of my comments until after you've heard from them. What I'd ask us to do as a courtesy is to let Mr. Tatum, on behalf of the applicant who is asking for the replat, which would require our joiner, and if we don't join, they don't move forward, to present. They have a number of issues they want to raise because they oppose this, and they'll certainly be opposing the quasi judicial proceeding later. I find it to be appropriate to let them at least present their, on behalf of the owners, why they don't want the county to join in, so that we can sort out both of those issues. I think it would be reasonable to allow Mr. Tatum a brief wrap-up and then, in an abundance of caution, what we will do after we've heard brief presentations from both of them about this, I don't want us to be sitting here for an hour, is to allow staff to come up here and answer any direct questions about this overall, because there is history on this going back to 2003. And I will say, the way we took title to it, the way the plat was done, could not be more messed up. But we own it and that's why we have to do it. So, my reason for presenting this is that the county says they're not going to join in, while there may be threats of litigation either way, I think you get the option as a property owner to join in or not before you have to vote on it as a quasi judicial matter. So, Mr. Tatum, if you would.
I have a question first. So, if we do join in on this, that doesn't mean that we're giving up any rights to the property that the county owns?
No, we're just consenting to the replat. Our 1.5 acre stays exactly as it is and exactly as it is on the plat. The replat does not affect our property rights whatsoever.
Okay.
But just like another owner would have the right to join or reject, that's how it is. But I'd ask him to present first.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson. Stephen Tatum here on behalf of Sewall Holdings, too. That is the owner of this particular parcel. The primaries in the LLC, or the only members of that LLC, are Camila Geraldo and Wells Bizet. I've got something I want to hand out for you, since we didn't really have anything available for you in a staff report way.
And I do want to be clear, we omitted the staff report that's going to the Planning Commission, because again, that staff report is on the plat itself. I don't want to confound the future quasi judicial hearing if you say yes today by doing that.
While that makes its way around, I'll go ahead and say that exactly why we're here today is only to ask you to join in on our replat of this area. I'm going to give you some background on how in the world we got in this predicament to begin with and then tell you why I think that we're entitled to do what we're doing. Not, we're not talking about development, there's no development plan in front of you. In fact, we don't have a development plan yet. It all depends on what happens with this. So a little background. In late 2002 and in 2003, a developer of the preserve at Grayton Beach, or the preserve at Grayton, applied for a plat and a development order. The, in order to increase the density, he utilized what are called bonus density points. These are mechanisms that are within your land development code.
Let me ask a question real quick. Can you in the back hear him? Barely.
I'm too tall.
Jason, do you have that lapel microphone? May he use that, please? Yeah.
Can you hear me now? No? Can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Little better? Okay. So let me just start over, because I don't remember where I was. 2002, 2003 timeframe, developer of the preserve at Grayton, applied for a plat and a development order for the preserve at Grayton Beach project. The zoning district for the property, TND, Traditional Neighborhood Development, only allowed four dwelling units an acre. In order to increase that bonus density, one of the things, or in order to increase that density, he took advantage of the bonus density provisions within the Land Development Code. And one thing you can do to get points towards extra density is provide a greenway as part of your project. While going through the development order process, the engineer made an error in the bonus density calculations. And instead of needing two acres in order to get to five dwelling units an acre, he really only needed to provide one and a half acres and that would still get him to six dwelling units an acre. So they left some density on the table. The plat ended up being approved in, I'm sorry, the DO was approved in July of 2003. Infrastructure was put in and final plat approval in November of 2003. Then in December of 2003, the developer found out he needed to pay a rec fee. He came back to the county and requested that the one and a half acres that he needed to give as greenway be accepted in lieu of the rec fee. That was, that was accepted by the BCC on that date, which was in December of 2003. That, the leftover half acre, so this greenway parcel is two acres in size. One and a half acres of it was deeded over to the county. The other half acre just stayed in the name of the developer's company, never changed names up until my clients bought it. What this, what happened when he deeded over the one and a half acres, he essentially created, did an illegal lot split. What should have happened at the time that that was deeded was a plat amendment should have been done, taking out the half acre, or at least drawing a line between the half acre and the one and a half acres. Nothing like that ever happened and then he offered it for sale and my clients put it under contract in 2023. Now, before they actually closed on the property, they did their due diligence, as they should, and came and spoke with, it was then the deputy director of planning, and she told them that she understood the density bonus issue, that this should be easily rectified and, you know, we have to come back to y'all for a replat, obviously, but it's, you know, splitting that out.
That Kristin Shell?
That was.
Okay.
So in, after that meeting, my clients also, you know, they reviewed the plat to see if, you know, maybe this is common area. The concern was that the association might have some claim to that property. So they reviewed the plat, not labeled as common area, not dedicated to the public. The greenway is never even mentioned besides showing as a greenway corridor on the plat. They also reviewed the covenants, conditions and restrictions for the preserve property and, one, there's some discrepancy as to whether or not those CCRs actually even apply to our property because they failed, the developer failed to record the legal description that the dedication actually encumbers, I'm sorry, that the CCRs actually encumber. But even if it does, the declaration provides a definition for what is common area and it says those areas designated by the developer as common area. And I've provided y'all with the original CCRs that were recorded, that's the one that has the orange highlighting on it. And if you're interested in seeing that definition of common area, it's on the third page, which is actually labeled as page two, because there's two page ones. So after reviewing all of that, clients closed on the property. We started down this planning process, or they did to begin with, and then brought me in a little bit later, because kept running into issues. So from late '23 until now, we've been kind of in this quagmire as to what to have, what's going on with this. Mr. Atkinson made the suggestion, what he just described to y'all, that it would be more appropriate for you to determine whether or not you wanted to join it before it went through Planning Commission and then back to you to try to approve plat. So that's how we got where we're at today. I do want to emphasize that there is no easements on this half acre to the public or to anyone else. It is not labeled as common area on the plat. It is not even mentioned in the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions and Restrictions. We feel like that as long as we can meet the other development guidelines, which is something you would consider down the road, not today, that this is a developable area. And I'd also like to point out that Walton County at some point, and I don't know when this happened, but on their one and a half acre parcel of the two acres, they changed that one and a half acres from a zoning of traditional neighborhood development to parks and rec, but left our half acre alone. Also, the association never made any claim to that half acre belonging to them. The covenants, conditions and restrictions actually say that the common areas will be deeded from the developer to the association at turnover. Everything else was deeded over to the association, not this half acre. This developer held on to this half acre and we believe it's because he had the intent to develop it all along, because why else hold on to it? It's a liability. He could have just given it to the county when it was the one and a half acres. I'm sorry, along with the one and a half acres. I'm not going to belabor the point. I know Mr. Shipman has a lot that he wants to express to you guys, but I would like the chance to stand back up and discuss this after I answer Mr. Gladwell's question.
We will, we will allow you to come back up once he is done, but his time is, you know, it's not unlimited, I'll just put it that way.
I asked Mr. Tatum a quick question.
Certainly.
Did I understand you to say that we gave the developer credit, density bonus points on this one and a half acres and then turned around and took it as the rec plat fee money?
That is correct.
We've done that quite a bit from what we're finding out. I think our land development code needs to change.
Well, that, I mean, that's two different transactions.
And the comp plan.
I mean, and it had nothing to do with you, but.
But yes, that is, that is what happened.
But we're giving him bonus points, plus we're going to give him credit.
Anything else for me?
Not yet.
Thank you. This happened in 2003. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, good.
I told you it was not.
We're going to keep it somewhat short.
I'm sorry, we're pretty much like a court case, but effectively, I guess this is a trial run.
Yeah, it's not, it's not. We're, you know, it's, I hope you can get that information to us in 10 minutes or less.
Well, we'll work fast.
Thank you.
My gosh, he's bringing one piece up here.
Those trees, they clear cut a lot.
Well, I wrote pine trees, Commissioners, so.
Pine trees?
Yeah, so I contribute to the production of paper. Okay, I want to start with, we have a PowerPoint as well. But I actually want to start a little somewhere different than I originally thought I would, since Commissioner Gladwell's question was about, they double dipped on the recreation fee and on the density bonus, they actually triple dipped. Because if you'll take the thing that's going down the binder and you turn to tab 10, where we have the actual development order. We did it a little differently back in 2003. It doesn't actually look like ours today, but it's labeled final recommendation. And if you turn to the, it's, the bottom of the page is page three, but it's actually the fourth page into it, where it talks about preservation plan, because this particular, all two acres are protected species of plants under our code. So, the, about midway down, it has the heading landscaping preservation plan. So, the, about midway down, it has the heading landscaping preservation plan. The submitted landscaping preservation plan shows that the required 25-foot buffer on the north and east between this project and state forest is provided. Preservation requirements are met by the development's covenants and restrictions and the greenway provision of the site plan in conjunction with the state forest property to the north of the proposed development. So, in other words, to meet the preservation requirement, they also counted this greenway. So, the land got counted three times to meet three different requirements. And with that, I'd like to, I don't know, Melissa, are you running this thing, or who's Are we doing it or not? Give me a PowerPoint. All right. I want to start with the plat, and I don't know if it's coming up or not, it'd be the third page of this thing.
It is coming up.
Okay. This is the plat. This is where everybody signs it, the developer, the, the commission, all the various parties required to sign a plat. So, you see it all got signed. If you go to the next page, it shows the two-acre greenway. And you can see it on there. It says greenway corridor. And that was to meet the three requirements that you had to meet, density bonus, recreation, and preservation. That is all it says on the plat. Now, in, I go to the fourth page. What they're trying to do, if you look at this, is over on the right-hand side, they're trying to carve off a piece of this greenway. And I guess their argument is, well, even though we called it greenway on the plat, even though we signed the plat, even though the plat dedicates everything to the public, gee, we didn't really mean to, and even though we got to escape three benefits, oh, and by the way, they also haven't paid their property taxes on it since at least 2012. We didn't mean for all that to mean we didn't own it. So, if you go to the next page, we look at what the plat actually says highlighted. All public areas shown on this plat unless otherwise stated shall be deemed to have been dedicated to the public for the uses and purposes there unstated. Under their own development order, that preservation area was for the public. Otherwise, they couldn't get the development order. They dedicated it through the development order and the plat. This is public green space. I don't, I think we all know what a greenway corridor is, but you know, it's there, it's provided for in your comprehensive plan that was adopted in 1997, that basically provides a requirement that you should have 6.25 acres per 1,000 population for, of open space or recreational space. And this is a requirement that was in place.
It's still in place.
Yeah. It's been in place since 1997. The next slide shows the actual green space and the connectivity that we're talking about. They're talking about disconnecting it from the development, because the half acre is between the development and the green space that they're talking about. The next slide shows the preservation area, and under our comprehensive plan land development code, if it has sand pine scrub or exuric hammock, which this space does, you have to preserve a certain amount of it. So, this was for the preservation of that land. The next slide is chapter 177.081, and this gets, unfortunately, to the legal argument, which it really should be before a court, but, you know, what's really going on here is their attempt to have you part of the court case as opposed to it being between us. Because 177 is the statute that basically says, when you, when you adopt a plat and it dedicates areas for some public purpose, which this does, because the public purpose is, they had to meet their, their preservation area. So, they dedicated it for greenway, then it's, the public's in perpetuity. So, it's not free to be divided or done anything else with. Then I want to, the next slide addresses your comprehensive plan that talks about when it's located within a designated greenway corridor, which they did here, clearly put it in designated green corridor. The comprehensive plan says that when it's agreed, may, when the developer may agree to account any area for that, which they did, it's permanently dedicated the public as use, as greenway. So, it can't be used for anything but greenway. They made an issue out of, well, there were mistakes made by the comprehensive plan, or the adoption was sloppy. The truth is, 22 years ago, yeah, that's true, we did a lot of sloppy stuff 22 years ago. It's been 22 years. And in an attempt to address it, the neighborhood amended their documents, because they're paying property taxes through the assessments and individual lots on all this. They amended their documents in 2015, I mean, 2012, and that's tab 15 of the binder I gave you. In that document amendment, it amends what defines as a common area, which is anything on the plat that's not a, a lot, a individual platted lot. This is not a platted lot. They're trying to make it one. In that, and that is over on page, that's on page, the third page of the declaration. So, it actually is treated as a common area. And the developer allowed it to be treated as a common area until this past year, when they sought to try to, or when they sold it, and the new owners started trying to pay taxes on it, so they wouldn't have to face this argument. Then you have the problem of McCorkindell versus Keaton. McCorkindell versus Keaton, anyone who went to law school in the state of Florida in the last 50 years would have had to study McCorkindell versus Keaton. McCorkindell versus Keaton is a landmark case out of the Florida Supreme Court from 1953. In 1953, and this is tab two of your notebook, there was actually, it's over, you may be familiar with the property. It's over the Panama City Beach, it's what they call the Sunnyside Beach. It's, the one area is a big vacant space there. And in that, the McCorkindells platted lots north of what is called Back Beach Road, and they sold them, starting in the 1930s. And they sold them per a plat that included, that showed on it, it said, public beach. And McCork, the Supreme Court said that the developer gets to choose the words that are put on the plat. But because of that, they have to live with them. This developer chose to put greenway on this plat. So, under McCorkindell, they're bound. And the whole reason I bring this up, this sounds like a legal argument, and yes, it should be brought before a judge, but the issue is, if you do what they want, all that does is mean then we're forced to say the county violated 177. They want to say, in the court case, they complied with 177. I think you should just stay out of it and let them go litigate it first.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shipman. Appreciate that. I'd like to summarize this a little bit to, for those of you that may not have been able to hear what this is all about. There's a, a long, narrow piece of property, and I'm, there's a portion of it that has a, the Preserve at Grayton Beach is the homes on it. Then there's two acres to, I believe, the west of it, and there's the houses, then there's some commercial, and then there's this half acre lot that, that Mr. Tatum is talking about. And then there's one and a half acres that was given to the county in exchange for the plat fees, which we need to fix that. But, so, the one and a half acres was sufficient per our current code to satisfy that requirement. And this other half acre in there is the half acre parcel that this gentleman has purchased, and he's, he's going through this whole process in order to be able to, I believe, build a house or two. I'm not sure exactly what their intention is. But, so, the county's got property at one and a half acres here, they've got a half an acre here, and then we've got a piece of commercial and, and the homes. So, that's kind of a synopsis of what it is. So, is there, before you come back up, I want to ask if there, if anybody else here up here has any comments or questions? No?
I'd rather hear.
Okay. All right. Mr. Tatum?
All right, I would keep it brief. The discussion about it being a public area is a red herring. There is nothing on the plat or in the development order that describes that greenway as being public area. The comp plan provision that he relies on where he says that the developer can take advantage of a greenway and count it towards preservation, that does exist, but that's not what happened in this case. The preservation was done. It wasn't that they took advantage of a greenway area in lieu of doing preservation. They actually provided two acres of preserved land. There were four acres total of protected vegetative community. The original developer preserved two. So, whenever we develop our half acre, if we get to do that, there's going to have to be some preservation buyout that occurs in order to be able to do anything with it. But that's for a different day and a different discussion. That's not where we're at today.
Right.
But what I want to point out is that there's nothing in any of the documents that definitively call this public area. In fact, in my opinion, it's a stretch to get there. The language that he relies on from the plat, that is the Walton County statement that shows up on the plat, that's on every plat, because the statute requires that it be on every plat, that doesn't mean that the greenway all of a sudden is a public area. What it means is that if there are public areas shown on the plat, those are deemed to be dedicated to the public, unless there's other, you know, statement within it, which our plat does have a statement that says the streets, alleyways, and common areas are dedicated to the association. The property taxes is an interesting thing, because the, the property appraiser was not charging property taxes for a little while on this through error in an assumption that it was common area to the association, never realizing that it had a completely different owner. My client actually went to the property appraiser and fixed that, and did pay taxes on it last year's tax cycle. Also, yes, the association amended their declaration to completely redefine what is common area, which in my opinion is, if they tried to enforce that against the property, would be illegal, because they can't just unilaterally determine that, oh, well, this property that you own over here, although the plat says it's one thing, we're going to determine that it's common area, because we want to make sure we get to keep control of it. Though they never asked for a deed to be issued to them from the original developer for that property. Finally, the case law he was referring to, the McCordle case. That was dealing with two things. It was dealing with common area, and it was dealing with a beach that was completely labeled public beach. It's kind of hard to get around the word public, and if we said public greenway on this plat, yeah, it's, it's, you know, apples to apples. But we're not talking apples to apples if we're talking, trying to use that case. So, to wrap up, we are interested, and we have reached out to the association to try to remedy this without having to come before you guys. Of course, at some point, we'd have to come before you and ask you to join, but we tried to work this out behind closed doors. That has not come to fruition. I just wanted you all to know, we're not here intentionally trying to, to waste time where it could have been worked out some other way, because we did attempt it. Hold on one second.
So, you're just asking us to join in on this?
Yeah, it's really simple, is we're asking you to join in on the application for the replat of just this two-acre parcel, so we can correct an error that was made 21, 22 years ago, or 23 years ago.
Okay.
That, that's really all we've got. And if you don't mind, let me ask my client one more question, and then I'll come right back to you.
Quickly, please.
All right, I am done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any comments? Yes, sir.
Mr. Atkinson, if, if we join in on this, does this expose the county to litigation that we would not otherwise be exposed to?
Candidly, I think we're going to be tied in the litigation, no matter which way goes, if these two go to court and litigate. My position would be as follows. If the board chooses to not join in, I am unaware of a cause of action based solely on one property owner refusing to join into a replat. Mr. Tatum would likely make an argument that the sordid history of this property opens the door to a claim against the government and its governmental capacity for what we did or did not do years ago. On the other hand, if we choose to join in, I expect litigation to commence between the Owners Association and the proposed replatters, in which the county will be joined. In that case, my position to the board would be, in all likelihood, depending on what the causes of action are, that we take a position that if they're allowed to, if they're required to join, as Mr. Shipman says, we'll defer to the court. If they're not allowed to join, we'll defer to the court. The board has expressed its intent it'll join in, it'll hear this, and we will hold this in abeyance until the court makes determination who has to sign and who doesn't, and let them go argue it. The bottom line is, I expect litigation to come out of this one way or the other, where I think we had the most exposure candidly, would have been if we'd have heard the replat first at a quasi judicial, and then been forced for you at this level to decide both, are you joining in, or allow your approval to replat to constitute your joinder. I think we'd get hit by both sides, no matter which way we found in that case. So, I don't see that either way is going to provide more or less exposure. It depends on how bad they want to push us. But you are a property owner, and you are not making a decision as a governmental entity per se, as much as you are making an decision as a property owner, who just so happens to be a governmental entity.
And this, this decision doesn't affect the, any future quasi or legislative issue or hearings before us as planning?
Correct, but I will note that approval of plaits is effectively a ministerial act. If you choose to join in and they comply with the record plat statute, short of a court order from, in favor of Mr. Shipman's client saying they have the right to do it, to join in, and they're refusing to, it's going to be a rubber stamp, like most plaits have to be.
Wait, repeat that.
And I'll try to state it slightly differently to make it a little easier. When this comes before you as a request of plat, you see plaits all the time, it's effectively a ministerial act. If they comply with chapter 177, we're obligated to approve them unless they're not compliant with the Florida statute or the land development code provisions, of which we don't really have any. Let's be very clear about it. Most counties don't. That's not a deficiency, it's just a comment. You have a statute that governs it, you follow the statute, you don't create new rules. If we were to deny it for no reason, we would be subject to litigation. The only caveat of that is, of course, Mr. Shipman's client wins in court, and they don't sign off, we don't have a plat to approve, because there's no way to record it. So, really, do you want to allow them to do this as a neighbor? We need a motion to approve joinder or to deny joinder?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve that we join. Any comments from the audience? Yes, Mr. Osborne?
For the record, Alan Osborne, what I see here is Pandora's box being opened. Maybe I could buy off on it if it was the original, original applicant. Maybe I could buy off on it if it was the original applicant. But they just stated right here on the record that they bought it and they knew it was a problem. So the person that the mistakes were made for was the original applicant. If you go forward with this, aren't you saying to anybody, and let's not even go into all the mistakes that were being made in 2003 and all the things that were going on back then, but if you let somebody come in and cherry pick something that got left undone, maybe I could buy off the original owner was entitled to something if a mistake was made. But if you buy a property, it's caveat emptor, isn't it? Isn't it buyer beware? You knew there was a problem when you bought it, and you entered litigation saying, well, I'm going to buy this because I think you made a mistake, and I want permission to go back and fix it even though I wasn't involved in it. I'm not sure I understand that that's a good position for the taxpayers. It is what it is. It's 20-some years later. And if you're willing to go to this plat 20-some years later, I got some stuff that I want you to go look at that you've platted, and there's a lot less time since then, and I'll be in the same position, I'll just be somebody down the road. But don't you really think about what was just said today? Why didn't the original applicant show up here and say, I had these entitlements? Because if he thought he'd have had them and he could have made some money, who up here thinks that they wouldn't have? That doesn't pass the smell test. And that's a test that this county greatly needs in most of its decisions. Does this pass the smell test? Now, obviously, I'm not a fan of either one of the parties back here or their representation of these kind of things, so I don't have a side. So on the side of the citizens, aren't you letting them open Pandora's Box when you don't have to? I'm not for opening up stuff like that for somebody else, or we're going to have people buy in, come buy every single property that's got a problem here and tell you they want you to fix it with our money. And I don't think we ought to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roark? I cannot say your name right. All right, I'm sorry.
Say Mr. Roark.
Roark.
You actually did earlier on, Todd Roark, thank you. So I agree 1,000% with what Mr. Osborne just said. So it's my understanding this property sold for $299,000. Where can you buy that piece of property on 38 for $299,000? Why was it sold so cheap? Because there was a lot of problems with it. So it goes back exactly to what Mr. Osborne was saying. Buyer beware. He paid $299,000 for a piece of property that had a bunch of issues. And now they've come to the county. I would just let the judge tell us what we need to do. Let them litigate it out. If we need to get involved, we get involved. In case that we're going to be involved either way, I don't know what the bigger liability is. I couldn't really follow. I just kind of got lost in the legalese, but that's my issue. Another thing, I'd just like to take another bite of the apple since we're here. So Mr. Gladwell, you pointed out two times, and then Mr. Shipman said three times. So going back to that stupid plat fee, fees, whatever you want to call them, we don't need stupid land, we need the money. I believe several months ago, we were trying to, and it doesn't, one thing doesn't have to do with the other, kind of, weren't we trying to borrow $200,000 to pay employees? Yet we let $775,000 in plat fees. I know they don't correlate. I'm just saying, there is a bunch of issues here, and rather than fire the director that just recently retired, you allowed him to retire, bring his ass back in here and take care of business. Because we have some issues, and this is just another one. And I agree, it's opening Pandora's Box as to what Alan said, but thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Margaret, I'll get you next.
Well, you can go first, but I don't have a problem.
It's fine, come on.
Sorry, ma'am, I didn't see her. Again, one, what, thank you again, Ms. Chairman. What I heard as John Q., public voting citizen, was this keeps coming up "public access." Does that mean that I can walk off the 38 sidewalk and walk on this piece of property?
Yes. The public property that we have, the one and a half acres that we have, yes, absolutely.
Right, the one and a half acres. That's right. Okay. My question would be next to Mr. Atkinsen. What's the possibility of just selling this to one of these two parties back here, getting your money and getting out of it, not tying yourself up in court?
Nobody's made that offer to us, and we'd have to do an open competitive bid if that's what the county wanted to do. But given the greenway designation and the greenway corridor per the plat on this, it is very unlikely that we could do that because the usability of it is next to nil as a greenway corridor.
Okay, well, then that's fair enough. Thank you for that.
I mean, if they wanted just a patch of trees and shrub.
I understand that, but if we were to get out of it, sell it and get out of it, then we wouldn't have to deal with the legality or anything, correct?
Well, we're the owner. I mean, all we have to do is say whether we want to join in or not, and we'll deal with the.
Then we'll go open that Pandora's Box. Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. Margaret?
Hi, good afternoon. Margaret Landry is the sticky wicket, and I'm glad I'm not in your shoes. But as a board member of the South Walton Community Council, we do support the planning staff in their difficult decisions in reviewing this application. We strongly support the Preservation and Continued Alliance for Greenways. The comprehensive plan promotes the permanent dedication of Preservation Greenway to the public. This has been a platted greenway since 2005. The greenway has been protected from development for over 20 years. It should stay a greenway. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, any more comments from the board? We have a motion and a second on the floor to approve it. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
And board, we will note obviously that should litigation commence, we will stay any decision so you're not drawn further into litigation.
Thank you.
We're going to have to get a break.
Is this a set for the planning commission on Thursday?
This is right.
Is the notice for Thursday for the planning commission?
Both y'all correspond to me tomorrow morning, and we'll address what's going to happen Thursday.
We'll take a five-minute break.
We are on item number 26. And Mr. Vice Chair Dan Curry, you have the floor. And I'm going to ask that he not be interrupted until he's finished with his talk.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll say a little bit about this before I invite Chief Rowell up here to kind of go over some items, some clarity items. But I decided to take a beach field trip the other day. And I wanted to look at this situation firsthand from one end of the beach to the other end of the beach. One of them I didn't even know was a hotspot. And the other area was, you know, Sandeston. So I want to first thank the Walton County Sheriff's Office for meeting me out there. Codes, Matt Traywick was out there with me. And lo and behold, when we get out there on the sand, we get a call. And they said, you want to go to the call? I said, absolutely. So we go to the call, and it's, I'm sure everybody's seen the area on social media. But we arrive, and the issue was wet sand versus dry sand. So we spent an hour, hour and a half discussing and debating wet sand and dry sand. Sitting on the, or I'm not sitting, I'm standing by the area where this family was. And they were in the wet sand. I'll swear on the Bible, whatever you want to call it, they were in the wet sand. But I was asked by the manager to go over there and fill their towel. If they're on dry sand, their towels should be wet. I'm not going over and filling anybody's towel. The manager went, wanted us to do that. And he said that they're in the wet sand, or they're not in the wet sand, they're in the dry sand. So about an hour of this back and forth. Codes went over there, he came back, he's not going to tell them to move. So the guy wanted to get his attorney and all this stuff because he felt that they were on private property. So lo and behold, in the middle of that, a wave comes and pretty much wipes out the entire family in one swoop. So I turned to him and I said, I guess if we were right in that violation, we would, we'd have to tear that up. And he said, and I quote, "A rogue wave does not count." So I'm not going to tell you what Chief Rowell said, I'll let him tell you that. But that was my intro for you, sir. But anyway, hour and a half, something like that, over there just discussing this. So it puts it in perspective when we, when we were headed towards the east side, or east end of the beach, towards Sandeston. And my timeline might be a little off, but there was a call on a missing child. So here we are, here, this kind of puts it in perspective. We're down here arguing over wet sand, dry sand, and about 16 inches because somebody had to walk around these people to get back on the wet sand. And there's a missing child report out there. That kind of puts it in perspective, don't it? It's very trivial, very, I mean, it was very disheartening for me out there to even witness that. I mean, they showed the picture of the little girl, and I'm like, we just got done arguing over wet sand and dry sand, this little girl's missing on the beach. And if y'all know where Sandeston is, that's like an ant, you're trying to find an ant. I mean, it's, it's, and that's, that's another thing, a couple of things, and then you're on, sir. But we need lifeguards out there, folks. That's ridiculous. I saw two lifeguards out there in that whole area in Sandeston. I wish I would have took some pictures, but I didn't even want to get out of the truck. I mean, if I would have opened the door, I would have hit somebody. We have two lifeguards out there, which brings my point to the rescue tubes. I wanted to add that in here. We, I mean, I'm ready, I know I can't make a motion, but I'm ready to dedicate 10, 15, 20 of these things out there. Those two lifeguards ain't going to, how are they going to protect or save people out there? You got, I really wish, I mean, Matt came, I appreciate Matt coming. Everybody up here should go out there and take a ride with these guys. And maybe you have already, and I'm the last one coming to the party. But that is really ridiculous. If you want to come in now and then, I'll talk about beach renourishment next. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Audie Rowell, Chief Deputy Walton County Sheriff's Office. As always, I want to thank each and every one of you for the support that you provide to public safety. That does not go unnoticed. We need your support in order to do our jobs. And I really believe that the reason we have a safe community is not just because of the sheriff, it's not just because of the hardworking men and women. It is the citizens of this county, and it is the commissioners of this county, that we all work together to create a safe community. So thank you for your support as always. So I want to thank Commissioner Curry for coming out with us and riding the beach. He learned firsthand the problems that we have, the confusion that we have. As I put it, the lines are starting to be drawn in the sand on both sides of the argument. And so it becomes very contentious sometimes. And you have to understand that the confusion out there, sometimes, well, with the public and even sometimes with us, we have four different scenarios that we have to manage. One is if a piece of property is in the settlement agreement, one if a piece of property is part of the summary agreement, one if the piece of property is in either, in either of that, and number four is if they have the ECL line in front of their property. So we have to determine, depending on each individual property, what it falls under. We actually had a complaint of somebody that came out, the property owner or the manager came down and told somebody to move. They wanted him further, they wanted him off the property. And the person complained and says, no, I have a right to be here. I know, I can stand here, it was a transitory zone here. And so the, actually, it was a Beach Community Service Officer said, no, you can't. So it was kind of put out there that the person who was making, who was out there standing on the beach was right, when actually they were not. They were standing on a property that was not either part of the summary agreement or the settlement agreement. So whole different set of factors. So until you know exactly which piece of property you're on, we can't give you an answer as to what you need to do. So there comes the confusion. And for us, what we are looking for as always, as always, we're looking for clarity. That's what we need is clarity. So it's, you know, we have to respond to what the board's decisions are. We're here to follow the will of the board. We're only trying to follow the law. And what the board wishes, that is our goal. But sometimes it does become very difficult. Sometimes there is not some clarity. Again, there's both sides of the argument. We're not on either side. We're trying to ride this thing right down the middle like we should. But again, sometimes it does become very challenging.
And just to add to that, we were, I think you pulled up your phone, and I can't believe the other officer's name to pull it up on his phone, and showed us that, hey, look, we're standing right on the ECL line. And I'm like, okay, but isn't there a disclaimer that says plus or minus 15 feet?
That's our understanding, that there's a variance of plus or minus feet. So it's hard for us, if you, if somebody says, no, I want them moved, or I want them gone, or I want them arrested, that's a problem for us. That's a problem for us.
And I just want to make that, make that clear, how tough your guys' job was. I mean, it's easy for me to sit up here, be in that audience, saying that you guys ain't doing this, you guys ain't doing that. And then you go out there and you got all these different scenarios, and then you're like, okay, well, I got this app that says I'm right on the line. And then it says, well, plus or minus 15 feet. So I mean, I don't know how you're going to use that in a court of law.
Exactly.
So.
So it comes down to clarity for us. That's what we're looking for.
Thank you, that's.
Any questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to ask a question, and I think Chance Powell, I might want to ask you. I believe, did you not tell me the other day that the ECL does not exist from Sandeston East, it only exists from Sandeston West? Is that correct?
We're talking about Topsail State Park. So everything west of Topsail State Park, it should have an ECL line. Everything east of Topsail State Park does not have an ECL line, it's not been renourished.
There are two, perhaps three locations further back to the east that have an ECL. Some of those are so old, they're certainly in the Gulf. One is related to a Dune Lake outfall, it doesn't do much good. So while there are, DP will tell you there are others, it's not a straight line, or not a meandering line even across the county.
That's correct.
Now, with the ECL, is it measured from a fixed point? I saw the blue and red buoy, or blue and red pipes and all that. It's measured from a fixed point, it's not 9,000 formulas.
I'm sorry, but I cannot answer that question.
The ECL is in a fixed location. Where it sits relative to the water obviously changes because the water changes. But the line does not move. It's not like the mean high water line that does move with the tides, the ECL is fixed.
So on the ECLs, and I'm just, I'm just spitballing here, I mean, I've talked to Tony a little bit, where we have beach ambassadors, or we have folks at these different accesses.
Tony Korman.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Tony.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tony Korman. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson. Is there any way that we could, as part of their regiment, each morning, take a feathered banner out, mark from the fixed point on the ECL, so people at least have a, kind of an idea where they can and can't sit, or stand, or can't walk, whatever the case may be, and at the end of the day, they pick the feather banner back up, and that's just part of their regiment?
Yes, a great suggestion. My only fear is, is that marker being moved. Who's going to stand there and watch the marker?
Well, I mean, I didn't want them lined up on the beach, but just a couple of them, maybe at the end of the beach access. I'm pretty sure that Tony Korman has some folks there permanently to talk to the folks, tell them, hey, this is where you can go, that's where you can go. I'm just, I'm just spitballing, I'm just trying to find something that, you know, you can easily say, hey, don't go to the right of that flag.
Right.
Don't go to the left of that flag.
Right.
You can't come north of that flag. Just, just, because you go out there and you're with your app, and you're going, okay, well, technically, you can stand right here, but somebody may come and tell you to move.
Right. Obviously, technology would solve this.
Right.
The ECL line stuff needs to be updated, but that would help solve a majority of that on the ECL side, absolutely.
And I know there's, you can't do that with mean high water line, but I'm just, since the ECL is measured from a fixed point, just thought maybe that something visibly that people can see would help some of that, so.
Potentially, potentially.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you to Chief Rowell. He is retiring.
Okay, thank you.
And he has been a wonderful servant of the people of Walden County. He's worked his way up through the system to become chief. He's been a great chief. He's easy to work with. He's also, as Mr. Curry will tell you, he responds to your calls and calls you back and meets you on the beach and does the things that he needs to do. But Audie, we're going to miss you. I know the Sheriff's Department's going to miss you, but you're not going anywhere, really.
No, I'm not going anywhere.
You're still staying in South Walden, and we wish you well.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thank you.
And I wanted to echo those sentiments, sir. I think you're a model public servant. You're what law enforcement is supposed to look like. And I just want to thank you for your years of service over the time that you've been here in Walden County, and wish you the best.
Thank you, sir. I do appreciate that.
Absolutely. Congratulations. Thank you.
So the, the part two of this is, I don't believe the governor signed anything yet, but I wanted to not go through the out of sight, out of mind type direction with this beach renourishment. I've already sent a message out to everybody and anybody who wants to listen to help us out. Representative Patronas, I've sent him a message out, he sent me a contact person. I've sat down with our legislative liaison and Melissa Gates with the environmental. I have a couple updates on that, and I'll just, I'll read them off. It says, Army Corps is working on the necessary surveys for permits to move forward with future beach renourishment projects. The county has a design agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers, signed in 2024, which the county is paying approximately $2 million to the Army Corps of Engineers for a hurricane and storm damage reduction, AKA beach renourishment design. This is for approximately 18.8 miles of beach. Last item. Currently, the Army Corps of Engineers has been working on a scope of work to procure a surveying firm to complete an updated survey for the design. This is different from the customary use settlement survey. Once a contract has been executed, it is estimated to take six months to complete. So I would like to, and I don't need direction because I'll just put it on my agenda item once a month, but I would like to continue with updates because I'm worried that if we don't keep this on top of the water, then it's just going to get lost, it's going to sink down to the bottom, and then two years later, we're going, well, where's that beach renourishment thing going that we were talking about two years ago? So I'm not asking the board to update or have staff update or anything. I'll be more than happy to put it as an agenda item when I have updates, or I will do it every other month. So that's all I have on the beach.
Madam Chair, Mr. Curry.
Yes, sir.
Is my understanding, next week, either Friday or Saturday, the governor will be over here to sign this.
Twenty-four.
When I get the exact date, I will inform every one of y'all. It's going to be in South Walden. And it was this Friday.
Supposed to let him make that announcement.
He is, but I just wanted the county to know. He is, but I wanted the commissioners to know that he is coming over here.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you.
And that's my beach update. Feel like I'm on Channel 7 News.
Number 27.
Let's see here, all right. Show it this one. All right. Wanted to say something a little bit about, I really enjoyed the prayer, Jason, that you did before the startup. I just want to, before I go through all this, that there's nothing personal whatsoever about what I'm getting ready to go through. By all means, I think I'm the only commissioner up here that was trespass warranted before he got elected, off of a county bridge and a county road. So if I had an axe to grind, I would have already done so. I don't have any axes to grind. Heck, those people that put me on that trespass warrant are probably the best folks I've ever met, and I spoke to all of them. I have no issues at all with them, is what it is. It's nothing personal, it's just business. We have a business to run, and if that business is failing, then somehow we got to fix that business. We can't just keep selling widgets when the widgets are broke. We got to do something. And kicking the can and just keeping with the status quo, I don't think is throwing anything in a glass house. That's being responsible and accountable to the citizens of this county. When, when, when people get elected and non-elected up here, and the same thing keeps going on and on and on, that's our problem. That's our fault. I wanted to hit the reset button because I stood out there. I sat out there with everybody out there. Randy, Ty, I sat for the longest time. So I know what it is on that side of the fence. I hit the reset button when I came on this side of the fence. Well, when I hit the reset button on this side of the fence, being in the private industry, there's some things that are wrong, and they haven't been addressed. And I just want to start from there. So that's, just, I appreciate that prayer, Jason, thank you. Policies and procedures and ordinances. Was it the 27th, we had the fire prevention question because I brought up the fire at Grady Brown. And I asked, since we had a 1995 fire prevention ordinance, and it wasn't updated, I asked why, and I got three or four different answers. I got, there's nothing ready from the administrator. I got Chief Voss, who said fire prevention is ready and it's been ready. And then I got some resolutions and some other things that supposedly weren't ready. So then a records request was sent to legal, and I got a 2023 draft from the fire inspector. I got a 2024 draft from legal, and I got emails back and forth since May of last year. But this all started in 2023. We can't run that. We can't, we can't run a business like that. That's, why has this not been become before the board and voted on? Why haven't, why is it stuck in limbo somewhere? Code violations. Does everybody know we got $3.9 million in violations outstanding? That's $3.9 million. That doesn't count the 200-plus thousand that we have settled on in magistrate or court, and that's just what they owe after they've settled out. So basically, $4 million in violations. We just going to let it keep rising? We going to do anything about it? We going to cut it in half? We going to, what are we going to do? Just so you know, that's, that's north of $8,000 a day that's occurring. Just keep it in perspective. Again, this is a business. Again, this is a business. It's nothing personal. Nothing. Engineering and Public Works. We've held over a half million dollars in a department for positions that we didn't fill for over a year. In a normal business, you wouldn't do that. If you're not going to hire them, if you don't need them, put the money back in general fund, put it somewhere where it's needed. I do know where it is needed. I asked Buddy in Public Works if he would need a new, or a second paving crew, and he told me what he really needs is, Buddy, forgive me, what is that?
Stabilization.
There you go. Stabilization crew, because the paving crew comes by and just, they're done and out of there in two, three days. But, that $550,000, north of that, could have went over to do that, and we'd have two stabilization crews, because I don't think there's a day that goes by that I don't hear about a road that needs to be paved, or a pothole that needs to be filled, or something needs to be done with a road, and we, and they, and bless their heart, they're doing the best they can, but there's only one crew, and it takes a while to prep that road for the paving crew to come by. So, again, it's just business. You know, you look at what you got, and you deal with it, and you move things around. You don't let it sit there for you. If, if this was all our skin in the game, I bet we'd be on it. I bet we wouldn't sit $500,000 in a department and not do anything if it's coming out of our wallet. I can tell you that for a fact. It's not even coming out of my wallet, but, and I'm bringing it up. Let's see here. We have two positions in engineering. One makes 130, and I'm not picking on engineering per se, this is just the first department that I went through. We have two positions, a capital improvements and work program engineer, and that pays $138,000 a year, and we don't have a job description for it. We have a long-range infrastructure program engineer that pays $124,000 a year, and yep, we don't have a job description for it. Not only do we not have that, we don't have ordinances on the three people that we do actually control up here, that talk to us, or that we can hold accountable. We have no ordinances on any of these three. I think Legal has brought that up before. Couple HR concerns. So, we have, I took over the office, and we got a car. District One has a county car. I don't use it unless I go out of county. That car smells like Marlboro himself is making cigarettes in that car. I complained on it twice and got it detailed. Still smells like Marlboro's in there making cigarettes. As far as I know, that person, there was no disciplinary action done. What was happened, they moved or transferred to another department, making the same amount of money in a different position, so on and so forth. I'm happy. I'm happy. But you have to be consistent. If you're going to, if that's going to be one of the two reasons that we terminated or wanted to terminate an ex-county administrator for vaping in a building, what do we do about employees smoking in the cars? We just heard somebody else come up there and say they heard it. I mean, it's hearsay unless you have it. I have the car, and it's sitting there. It doesn't move, because I ain't getting in it. Again, consistency. Is it selective? Do we only do what we want to do when we want to do it? Or is it fair across the board? We want to talk about being fair and getting the facts, and we're not doing it. And then, we make excuses when we don't do it. It's wrong. It's wrong. You wouldn't run your business like that, so don't run this county like that. The 27th meeting, again. I asked, let's see here, let me get it. So, Commissioner Drake had asked about, you know, if, I don't know the exact question, but if you only knew 50% of the job, or wherever that puts you on the scale if you were hired to come in, you know, and where would you be at? Could you still get the job, so on and so forth? So, I asked a couple questions at the end, and one of them was the interviewing process. I said, what happens in the interviewing process? You just get one day, and that's it? And it was told, generally speaking, they pick two or three dates to choose from. Some of that's going to depend on the amount of applicants, where the applicants are coming from, if they're from out of town, but generally, give about two to three options for dates to choose from, and then, they work with a group of applicants to best accommodate everybody that they can. That's false. I told my son, when he wanted to work for the county, I said, I'd rather you not. I said, I don't, I don't want that persona put on me. But then, after I thought about it, and he said, Dad, it's something that I really want to do, I said, go ahead. It'd be a good test. Let's see how the HR process works. He got given one day, and I'm still waiting on records requests, by the way, for the text messages between HR and my son, but he was given one day for the interview. He said, I worked that day. He gave them a couple other days, they said, those days ain't going to work. She said, well, can't you team in from your job for the interview? Well, I asked that question. You would agree, Mr. Sunday, last 27th, you would agree that having a potential applicant interview from their current employer via Zoom or via electronically while they're working is not a great idea, because we wouldn't want our employees doing that, correct? Answer, he chuckled and said, I would recommend anyone applying for a job to do it on their off time. It's fine. Would you find it concerning that an applicant with a bachelor's degree in digital media and works for a director of a news program, I guess, isn't qualified for a content creator at the TDC, apparently? I'm glad my son went through this in the beginning. I said, I didn't want that. I'd rather stay away from that, but he did it. He's a grown man. But, it turns out, I got to see how the HR system works currently, not 10 years ago, not five years ago, currently. And that boss of that department told me one thing, and it didn't happen. That is not what happened. Another thing, I was told when I came in here about the hiring processes, because I wanted to go down to each department, you know, how the hiring process works. I was told that HR gets the applications, the resumes, vets them, basically puts them in a category or a pile to give to the department heads, saying, hey, these are the ones that are qualified, the non-qualified, we kept, whatever the case may be, but here's the ones, basically, you can choose from, or that are viable for your position. I didn't see that happen with the TD, or the tourist development deputy position. You have two people, I'm assuming Stan and Terry, that qualified a applicant that isn't what the director wanted. He wanted the other guy, and he was still within the range, the salary range, so I would assume that if the department head likes a person, they should be able to negotiate a little bit, maybe inclusive with the county administrator and HR, to get that person for the job. And that's just, I don't know, that's just what I think. I mean, I don't, I don't know how many years Mr. Sunday or Terry have in Walton County beach operations, but I would assume that the guy who's been running the show for a while, and that everybody up here respects, would have the leeway to hire his own deputy. So, that's the other issue. I don't know if you noticed, the other day, we had Mr. Blue come up, and after several meetings, or after, I'm sorry, one meeting down there, the main objective on my behalf was liability. That's it. I don't care if he wanted to put a merry-go-round on that county land, I don't, whatever the case may be, whatever the agreement was, I wanted liability or some kind of agreement of hold harmless towards the county for him using that property. That's it. Well, I asked staff, I think a couple times, is there anything like that? And the only answer I got was, risk manager said, well, we got our normal fact insurance. Well, that's not what I was looking for. I'm looking for, you know, a certificate holder, as Walton County's placed on the certificate holder, because that's the insurance that we go through first if anything ever happens, and then, it comes through us. Well, at the onsite meeting, there was no such cert. I didn't hear of one. And then, we, then I bring it to the board, and all of a sudden, one is produced, which is great. I'm glad, it almost looked orchestrated a little bit, but that's all right. I'm good with that. But, he showed the cert, and what was concerning to me is, his statement was, he's turned that in for years. And then, I asked staff where the cert is, and it's, and it's, we don't have one, or I don't know. I can't even remember the correct answer, other than we have fact insurance. I turned that over to Clay to make sure that, you know, through their insurance company, have they had that insurance cert over the years? So, that was another issue on my part, or concern. I know we beat Cassa Magnolia to death, but, you know, again, we have a planner that's on the administrative staff. I don't know why we didn't send her over there and just monitor what's being brought before the board the last couple days. Again, in the private industry, you got people that, that's short-timer disease. They just sit back and watch the clock until it's time to go, and then, they go. Again, I'm learning this government slash versus private stuff almost daily now. But, one thing that it all boils down to is, you can't run a company and you can't run a county like this. It's just impossible. We're going to be up here, we're going to bicker back and forth, we're going to, you know, we're going to continue finding these things. I mean, I got three years and five months. That's going to be a long time for some folks, because I'm going to record request my butt off. That's what I got hired in here to do, and that's what I'm going to continue to do. I don't care if it's this county administrator, or the next county administrator, or this HR guy, or that HR guy. Sorry, I came in here to treat this like a business, and I want to run it like a business. But, I don't know. The mobility fees, again, that's a, I mean, I found out about that at the back end of a Bar and Grill meeting, just, you know, deciding on that scenario, or try to get that up to par, and it just bewildered me that, you know, it hasn't been brought up before now, with all the inconsistencies. And if you remember right, I said this probably at two meetings, that, especially the one with the confirmation, where we didn't want any confirmation, it was just fine, that's what the board wanted, that's what we going to do. But that allows us three people to hold accountable. I can't hold Buddy Wright accountable for nothing. I can't hold Chance accountable for nothing. He has a boss, and that's Mr. Sunday. So, that is what the board wants, and that's where we have to go to when we can't, when the, when the company's not running right, and the company needs help, and we're finding out things almost every meeting about something that's been wrong for the last couple years, sometimes, we got to stop, put the tourniquet on, something. We can't just keep kicking cans down the road and, oh, we'll do it next meeting, oh, we'll do it in that meeting. I just want to put something in perspective. On November 13th, just want you to know, if you guys, I did a binge watch of about 16, 17 BCC meetings over the weekend. On November 13th, Commissioner Anderson made a motion to terminate the previous county administrator, because he failed to bring a department head to the board for confirmation, to which, we stated it was a law slash statute at that time. It turns out, it wasn't. And for vaping in county buildings. This motion had a second, but then, was pulled and was brought up again at the next meeting, I believe, without cause, on December 19th, with an emphasis on the vaping aspect again. To compare, again, when I took office, assigned to the D1 office, I was given a car that was smoked in. So, you're firing a county administrator for vaping, but then, you do nothing with an employee that's smoking in the car. I'm just trying to, trying to do some comparisons on the extreme of one end to the other, and what we don't do here, and we do do there. So, these are just a few items I know and concern me. With that, I'm making the following motion. My motion is without cause to terminate Mr. Stan Sunday's contract with Walton County and place in the interim county administrator position Mr. Brian Kellenberger.
I thought we were on number 27. I didn't know we were on 28.
Yeah, I'm old enough.
Okay.
No sense in just dragging that.
So, you made a motion to fire the county administrator?
Yes.
We're treating this as item 28.
Yes.
For discussion purposes, I will second that motion, so that the audience can speak. I will add some things to what Mr. Curry was saying.
Madam Chair, I'm going to need you to pass the gavel, because the vice chair made the motion. It is to your discretion, to any non, okay? Commissioner Drake, you are chair.
Brad, I'm, Brad, it's yours.
No, ma'am, I will not accept it.
If he declines, you can pick anybody else you prefer. If you wanted to go to Commissioner Anderson, that's acceptable, since.
Wanted to go to Dan. Nobody wants it.
I'll do it if you're not interested, I'll do it. Go ahead. We have a motion on the floor?
And a second.
And a second.
That we need.
And for discussion?
For discussion.
And, any commissioner have anything to say?
I'd like to ask for, Madam Chair, I'd like to ask for-
He's the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'd like to ask for a response from the accused.
Okay.
Why don't we hear the public first, and then, so he can respond to the public as well? That's okay.
Actually, I-
Go ahead and address a couple of comments that were made.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Sunday.
You, Mr. Curry, you keep referring to the employee who allegedly smoked in the That particular employee was a commissioner's aide, and as you know, commissioner aides report to the commissioner. They're hired, fired, disciplined by the commissioner. Interviews. The statement I made about, and it's my understanding, that HR typically starts with two or three dates for potential interview dates. Now, do they eventually narrow down to one? Yes, they do, based on, you know, a utilitarian theory. I can tell you, when we did interviews, Melissa, Mr. Treewick and I, I forget who else was on the panel, for human resources director, we did interviews on three separate days. So, that's not false. With regard to the deputy beach ops director position that Mr. Kellenberger has, that job was offered to the candidate that you're speaking of. The candidate declined the job. We went back through the interview process, the candidate was selected again, the candidate was made another offer. He declined that. Not only did he decline that, he countered back at a salary that was, I mean, we, it's part of our job in HR and administration to balance starting salaries with salaries of those that are currently on staff. And as long as I'm here, I'm not going to allow- And as long as I'm here, I'm not going to allow a director to just pay an employee anything they want to irregardless of the salaries of the current staff. So those are what I want to address at this time.
Mr. Sunday, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
This employee, you made him an offer and he countered with a offer higher. And then when you said you made him a counter offer, he upped from what he was, is that correct?
I believe the initial offer to the candidate was around $85,000. Mr. Kellenberger had requested 92,000. So he declined the 85. When he went back through the interview process again, Mr. Franksman upped that offer to 89, right at 90,000 and explained in the offer that, given the opportunity and the possibility that he received a COLA come October 1st, that would put him over the 92,000 that was currently being requested, he said no and he countered back at 95.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment, ma'am.
Go ahead.
My comment to that is I just feel like each director should have the authority to do their job, carry out their job that's commensurate with their responsibilities. And if a director feels like he needs a particular individual that he feels comfortable with and he feels can step into his shoes if necessary, then that's the director's decision. I don't think that it should be up to yourself, actually. I think that if Brian Kellenberger felt like he needed a particular individual, he's been in that position a long time, he's got a very tough job, he does it very, very well. And if I'm not mistaken, that was within the salary range that we as a county authorize. And so why would you slap him in the face and tell him, you don't, you know, you don't like his choice, you're going to make your own choice? That just doesn't seem right to me. But I want to say a few other things while I'm at it.
Can I say something? Can I respond to that?
Certainly.
The offer was 16% above the starting salary.
But what's the range of salary? How much below the high end of the range was that?
I don't remember the high end, but it was.
I think that it was about 112, I think is the high end, I believe, and he was asking 95. So he was well within the range, well within the range. But, you know, there's a lot of things that I agree with Commissioner Curry on as far as, I've been asking for ordinances to be updated on a regular basis so that we don't find ourselves in situations like we have during ball season or whatever the case might be, when we don't have an ordinance that's ready to rock out and roll with the appropriate information on it. I mean, we still had, and I just pointed out about a month ago and gave a copy to one of our employees, on our own website, our own current website, we have home permits. Nobody knew that and the information was outdated because it didn't coincide with the current Florida statute. We don't even have, we don't even, our strategic plan is still a draft strategic plan. Our strategic plan has been a draft for a couple of years, I think. So, I mean, what are we supposed to be looking for? We've got so many problems with our land development code. South Walton is so messed up because of our land development code or the misuse of our land development code and all the things that were authorized and allowed to happen that never should have happened, absolutely never should have happened. And, you know, I mean, it might not have been you, yourself, Mr. Sunday, but he worked for you. So ultimately, you are the top dog and you are the one that is ultimately responsible. We have positions that are unfilled, that people need. We have six full-time employees that work in the kitchen at the Eagle Springs Golf Course. And the only reason that we have six full-time employees there is because somebody wanted to, when I was trying to get a second aide when I first came on board, somebody wanted the board to squirm. And so instead of giving what Justin, that's running the golf course, what he asked for, which was part-time employees, which they don't get benefits, they said, oh no, go ahead and give them full-time employees. They didn't need them, but now they have six, I believe, full-time employees that we have to pay full benefits to, which is why our restaurant is not breaking even. It's not Justin's fault. It's the fact that he was shoved to have these employees in there that they didn't need, but somebody thought they were being really cute, you know? So that's another one. We don't have an executive director for the TDC. You yourself, Mr. Sunday, told me a year ago that you needed a deputy county administrator. I don't even know if you've asked for one, but you haven't gotten one. And if you're that busy that you can't get the ordinances done, can't get the paid parking done, have been asking for it for two years, you can't get code issues completed, the DRB, two years ago, we were supposed to put 38 and scenic highway 98 or scenic 98 under the DRB so that we could have standards because as to Brian Kellenberger's point at the last meeting, he's got to redo the bike path even though the stabilization and the drainage work can't be done properly, not the stabilization, but the drainage work can't be done properly. So to your words, it looks like a third world country and yes, it does, it looks pathetic. It's supposed to be a scenic highway and there's nothing scenic about it. We have no parking, we have no parking garage, which is on my list here. I mean, we've got, let's see, what else have I got here? We don't have a planning director. I mean, Stephen Schoen is wonderful, he does a great job, but we have known for over a month that we were going to be, that Mac was going to be leaving and we should have, that should have been a priority to get a planning director in place because now we're just kind of scrambling. I mean, they're already overworked, they've lost Christian Shell, they've lost Renee Bradley and now this one. So we're losing people, but who's coming in with experience? With experience, who's coming in? I mean, to your point in the civilian world, my point in the military world, we don't put up with this stuff. You do your job and you do it right and when you know somebody's going to be PCSing out of there, you find, you get their replacement and you get them in there. You need to have overlap time so people can learn the job. You don't just throw somebody new in there and hope that they can handle it, you know? I mean, this county has grown leaps and bounds. It has grown leaps and bounds and we're still trying to play the way we did 25, 34, 40, 50 years ago. We just can't do that anymore. We have got to wake up and smell the coffee and we need good people in good positions that are going to do the job, that are qualified. And by golly, it's time we do the right thing. And all this shoving applications in the drawer and all that kind of stuff that we do, we've got to stop doing that. We've got to, we've got to work this like a business. It is a big, big business. We bring in how many billions of dollars?
Budget's 310 million.
310 million is our budget. How much does this county bring in in ad valorem taxes?
Taxable value, she says.
Yes.
Taxable value is about $42 billion.
$42 billion in taxable money in this county. We've got $42 billion that comes into this county from taxes and we have stormwater problems, we've got infrastructure problems galore, we've got all kinds of problems. You can talk to anybody, you can come into my office, talk to anybody that comes in there and they'll give you a list of the problems that we have. I want to say some of this stuff is getting done and I really appreciate that, we're getting some upgrades done, but my gosh, some of this stuff should have been done 10, 15, 20 years ago. So my point is we need to have qualified people, this BCC board needs to be able to confirm the 17 people that are in the big department heads, we need to be able to confirm those individuals, not because we don't trust the person that's in that position to choose them, but just to make sure that we're all on board and we're all in agreement and we're all saying, yeah, that's a great person. You still have 483 people that we don't, we don't have anything to do with as far as hiring and firing or anything like that. So these are things that we've got to get done. Thank you for listening to me.
Go ahead, Mr. Curry.
I just had one thing to say when we were talking about the salaries with Kellenberger's deputy. Just to put in perspective, that HR position, three months prior to the ex-commissioner's aide going in there made $66,000 and with no experience in HR, she moved in there for her regular pay of $78,000. So within three months, that position went from 66,000 to 78,000. I just want to be clear that there's a comparison there when we're talking a couple thousand dollars for the deputy for Kellenberger. We had no issues with this, but then we got issues with his position.
So it was 75, not 78?
Well, that's what she makes now, I believe, isn't it?
75.
Interesting.
75. It's what she transferred from the aide position to the employee relations coordinator position. I went back and looked at the job description and the job description requires four years of experience, either in HR or investigative. The candidate that was selected and the employee that you're talking about has about 20 to 25 years of investigative experience. So the predecessor in that position had zero. So that is why the disparity in those two salaries. With regard, Commissioner Johns, to your comment about interlocals, Melissa's staff is working on the funding agreements. The staff in my office and in the county attorney's office is going, are going through the interlocals. I understand that they've made it through the first blush and separated out the interlocals by those that are relevant, active versus those that are no longer active or no longer relevant. And so the next step will be to start updating those that are active and relevant. As far as the paid parking, that RFP was issued, we have received responses to that. The evaluation team has ranked those responses. I believe we have a selected firm to bring back to the board. I'm supposing that would be at the next meeting. So that has been done as well.
Mr. Gladwell.
Just a couple of quick comments. And I don't mean this to be critical, Commissioner Curry, but I think it's unseemly to be talking about employees, regular staff employees at this podium. We should, we should only speak about the three that answer to us and that person is not here to defend themselves, they've never been accused of anything and that's unseemly.
I apologize for that.
And the other thing is, we're getting awful, we're getting into day-to-day stuff way more than it probably needs to be done at this table, so I would just caution about that. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Go ahead. Anyone else on the board?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner Drake.
I have a policy question. So, Mr. Curry, prior to your joining the Board of County Commissioners, you sat out there in the audience a lot and you were very critical of staff, you were very critical of the board, you took pictures on Facebook, you drove Shane Supple nuts, you drove Brad Alfred nuts. I can only imagine you did. They've never said anything. But you, one of the things that you really mentioned oftentimes in your diatribes to us, when you were speaking to us, was that you were disgusted by this friends and family plan. So the policy question I have for you is are you okay with friends and family plan
If you're talking about my son applying for a job, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
I did not want him to apply and I told him that, but he's a grown man and he wanted to go anyway, he wanted to apply anyway. So I said, go ahead, but I cannot and will not be a reference. And if they come and ask me anything, all I'm going to say is, you're my son.
But that's not, that's not a criticism anymore. You would welcome anyone that's family to take, to have the opportunity to join this prestigious county as an employee. You're no longer offended by that.
If we stop nepotism right now, Commissioner Drake, I don't think we could get anybody to turn the AC on.
But you had a problem with that prior to.
Oh, I had a problem because the optics out there, and I explained that, the optics out there are a little bit different than the optics behind the desk. That's why I said, I mean, hell, they put a trespass warrant on me over your bridge, Commissioner Drake. So, I mean, now, those guys are good as gold. I mean, as far as I know, they've done everything expected of them and over and beyond. Brad Alfred is a freaking star in my book with Chukta Beach Park. So I don't know if that answers your question or not. I mean, the best person for the best job is what I would think, but do we have confidence that the best person for the best job is actually in that spot? That's the question.
Okay, well, I'm okay with that. I'm just glad you came around. It's not, you know.
I'm on Team Drake.
All right. So the question that has to be asked is, I look out here and I see a lot of employees. I've spent time with a lot of these individuals that work for this county. I'm very proud of everyone that's here. They go through a lot, they have a lot to bear, a lot of wear and tear, they do a good job and I respect that. I look out there and I see the faces today and there's a disposition about them that is good. And you can see the quality on the faces of our employees. Prior to Mr. Sunday's tenure, I could look out here at those, at our wonderful staff and our employees, morale was terrible. People did not enjoy coming to these meetings, they didn't enjoy coming to work, there was a failure in leadership. And I gave that guy a try. In fact, the last time we went through this exercise, I reached out, when things went off the rails, I asked for a timeout and I said, let's get through the Christmas holidays and let everybody think on that. And then we would come back and then we would make a decision. During the Christmas holidays, I reached out to at least 30 employees and I told them, I said, hey, I want to ask you, and this is confidential, it's private, I'll never repeat this, but I just want to know what your opinion is of our county administrator? Is he someone that's good to work for? Out of 30 employees, 29 of them told me no. That's where we were.
And it wasn't this and it wasn't Mr. Sunday, David.
Correct. I gave that man a chance. I tried several times. His style of leadership just didn't work. I don't know if that's what you want to go back to, but when he would come into my office, he would prop his feet up on the table, he would vape his cigarettes, he used the F-word, he just had a, I mean, he had his staff taking care of his dog and running them on errands and things like that. I get, even with all that going on, I tried to find some moldability there. I was trying to give the man a chance to do his job without rushing him right out, you know, right out the door. But then when we went through this exercise in a public meeting, he demonstrated that he was not capable of holding it together. It was very, it was one of the most disrespectful things that I'd ever witnessed that took place in front of a governmental body. And I was convinced at that point that I didn't have any dislike over that gentleman, I didn't have any displeasure, but I just didn't believe that his leadership was ever going to be effective. So we had to make a change. I haven't seen that. I mean, I hear all these nitpicks here and there. I mean, imagine, I mean, Mr. Roark, imagine the CEO of Bank of America having to deal with the nuances that, you know, with the local clerk or with a lending officer in some other city. Organizations are big. I mean, that's, we're not Bank of America, but we still have, we have close to 500 employees and management is difficult. But I've watched Mr. Sunday stay here till way in the night when we were going through challenges with weather and disaster and the most unfortunate of circumstances, he was working over. He was working overtime, Mr. Traywick was working alongside with him, and I'm not seeing this. But what I am seeing, I'm just seeing a lot of hypocrisy, and I have agreed and disagreed with everybody in this room. I've disagreed with Mr. Sunday. I've disagreed with everybody that's sitting out there at one time or another, but I always am trying to get the policy right. I'm not, I'm not here to play sides or favoritism. At one point, the crowd wanted everybody gone, and then I was supportive of a fresh start. I was like, "Yeah, we do, we've got to, we can't do the same things from here on out that have been taking place over the last 40 or 50 years. We have to clean that up." We are, and we have. There have been a lot of changes that have taken place recently in personnel issues, and they're working, they're effective. But I, I just don't understand this need to win. I'll take a loss every now and then. You know, when we debate something, if I'm not on the prevailing side, okay, we move on. It's okay. But what is happening right now is, it is a, it is a sport, and what we're doing is we're dealing with people's lives and their livelihood for sport. That is not something that I was taught in my Sunday school lessons. That is not the kind of person that Christ wants us to model. And I appreciate, Mr., I appreciate your prayer, Jason. I can't cast stones at anybody. I've made mistakes. I've done things that were embarrassing, but we're all human. But the goal here, the only reason I have inserted myself into this, this is miserable. This, the morale of our citizens is in every corner. You have complaints about every issue you could ever imagine. In 60, of the 67 counties, I have visited every county, I have worked with elected officials in every county, nothing, nothing anywhere is like what we deal with on a daily basis in trivial matters. All I want to do is be a part of a board that puts Humpty Dumpty back together. We inherited a mess, okay? A several decades-long mess that we've inherited, and we're picking up the pieces one by one. I'm seeing it. I'm seeing it on their faces. I'm seeing it with other employees. I'm seeing it everywhere. We're making progress, but there is this irresistible desire to continue to just stir the pot. I wish that everybody would just appreciate and value the employees that we have, the team members, as Mr. Roark likes to say, and I agree with that. We are a team. I wish people would just accept and love and embrace the hard work and the dedication that our Walton County employees provide for us, and that we should not take them for granted or treat them as a sport. I just don't understand that. I don't at all. And I have, I have numerous, on numerous occasions, I have disagreed with everybody that's sitting up here. I have disagreed with people out there. I've agreed, I've been on one side, I've been on another, but it's all, it's going to continue to be about sides. Mr. Curry, you came here, and you had a very similar speech that you gave when you ran for office, is that you wanted to change things. You were sick and tired of the things that had been done in the past, and you want to do something new, and you want a fresh start, and you want to see, contribute, invest, rather than criticize. Contribute. Lend a helping hand. Go down to Public Works and work alongside with some of those guys one day. I mean, that's, that's what we're, we're a family, we're a family, a Walton County family, and we're going to have disagreements, but you don't divorce your kids over it, you don't, you don't abandon the house over it. You try to figure out, you try to figure out how to make the thing work, and that's all I want to do. And I've said it time and time again, my expectation of the people that I vote for, whether it's the governor, the congressman, state senator, elected, local elected officials, whomever, what I want and what I expect is that that person is going to do what they say they're going to do, and that they line up philosophically with my beliefs, but I have to trust them to do what they say they're going to do. And if they disagree with me, but in their heart, they feel like it's the right thing to do, I respect that. But if they do agree with me, and they philosoph, and they take the other position, that's called corruption, and I don't want any part of that. So when I'm on a different side from someone, that's what bothers me, is that you have to always agree. You're good, you find favor with people as long as you agree with them, but then as soon as you disagree with them, you're off, you're out of the, you're kicked out of the shrine. Why? Why? It's about power, 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 corruption, corruption, corruption. I don't think that we're worse off today than we were two years ago. I absolutely do not. I think we're moving on a right trajectory. I see good things happening for our county. Every time we get together for Christmas, for our luncheon, or for Public Works Day, everybody's so happy. That wasn't, that wasn't the case three years ago. People did not even want to be together. You could see the doom and gloom on faces, it was terrible. So I wholeheartedly disagree with what you're trying to do here, and I just hope that maybe, maybe in your heart, you could reconsider and figure out how to, how to make this thing work.
Mr. Gladwell, before you...
I just have a real quick, I think, correction, Commissioner Drake. When you look out there on them faces, them employees don't want to be here now either. They don't want no part of this.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I find it, I don't know, I don't dislike Commissioner Drake, but sometimes when you get on these kind of story-type, and it looks like you're looking down on someone or you're talking down to someone, I mean, do you remember this, do you remember this meeting?
Mr. Curry?
That's when you were doing stuff behind my back, pointing at me and looking in the crowd, so I don't, I don't hold credence to some of what you say about hypocrisy and doing the right thing and being respectful and all that. I keep this as a screensaver to remind me what not to do. So that's all I have to say about that.
Anyone else?
I'm going to say something.
Well, may I? Mr. Curry, I apologize for calling you, calling your boy. I wholeheartedly and sincerely apologize. The other person immediately that evening, I sent her a message and said that it was irresponsible of me and that I apologized, so...
I had people send me this, telling me, "Did you know what he was doing behind your back?" And then when I turned, when I look at the video and I turned, you were like a little middle school boy, and you went. So I lost some respect. I'm sorry. You know, it can be gained back, I guess, but, you know, when you go on some of these tangents and you tell us what we're supposed to be and how we're supposed to act, and you bring in the Lord and all this stuff, and then all I got to do is look at that, and it doesn't hold credence to me, so I'm just going to tell you that right now. Thank you. Thank you for your apology, though.
Mr. Sunday, do you have any more comment?
Let's definitely give him an opportunity if we let the public talk.
Do you want to wait to the end if you have any? Okay, we're going to call on the audience, and I'm going to warn you, this is about policy or what Mr. Sunday's doing on the job or not doing on the job. It's nothing about his personal life or any of these commissioners' personal life. We're going to keep it on the subject. There's a motion to fire Mr. Sunday, and there's a second, and so we're going to keep it strictly on that subject. Mr. Roark, you're first. For people over there, you're probably going to have to step out in the aisle because I can't see past the first couple of people. Go ahead.
R-O-A-R-K.
Mr. Ro, tell me again.
That's fine. Mr. Drake, may I, may I adjust, Mr. Drake, specifically?
No, you have to address me.
Well, okay, I would like to ask Mr. Drake a question.
You have to ask me the question.
So, Mr. Drake, what...
Mr. Roark, the policy is you direct comments.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, what would you do if you received an email from an employee that was basically begging you, theoretically, I mean, actually literally begging you to make some harassment, some retaliation, and some intimidation, stop? What would your first reaction be? If you received such an email that lined out, it would take me 20 minutes to read it to you, what would your reaction be upon receiving that email?
I would investigate, and I would call that person, get their side.
May I ask you to ask Mr. Drake what he would do with that?
I don't know, Clay, is that possible?
You'd look into the matter.
That's a view, it's not for impromptu questions, but certainly that's the board's discretion of us.
Okay, so what I will say then is, our county administrator in January received an email, approximately, it'd take me 20 minutes to read, and I have it here, I can provide it to the clerk, somehow I can email it to her to make it public record, actually it's public record anyway. 20 minutes. It took 10 days to acknowledge receipt of that email. When he did acknowledge receipt of the email on a Friday, on Monday, that email, he said he sent that to that infamous HR consulting company and their infamous employee consultant that was here. So he sent that email, he received from that employee, to that HR consulting company and the infamous employee consultant that was on board. That Monday, she was brutally attacked in front of the entire HR organization, so much so by that non-government employee and the other employee that you guys have been talking about, so much so that another employee got scared, left the office, sent an email to a commissioner here as well as to the county administrator, outlining everything that was going on. The next day, Tuesday, the next day, that non-government employee authored a corrective action form, and that other employee signed it, and then took it in and had the dead lame duck HR director at the time sign it, and that non-government employee delivered it. This is, Mr. Drake and Mr. Anderson, this is not about employees. This has nothing to do with about any employees. You are trying to turn this into something that's not. These guys are fantastic. Any interactions I've ever had with them have been astounding. What the issue is, guys, is freaking leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Roark.
I would like to finish. You took some time to...
I'll give you 10 more seconds.
It is leadership. It's leadership. He, and I believe, I've got a public records request, Mr. Atkinson, that has been delayed for three weeks. I haven't received it. I want the other side of that email that says what he did.
That's it, Mr. Roark.
You know, okay...
We got three minutes.
I understand that, but you've got to understand, Mr. Drake tried to turn that into employees, us against employees. It is not. It's leadership.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say, Mr. Roark, if you'll make sure you reach out to the county attorney's office or email me directly in the morning. No request has been intentionally delayed, but we'll figure out where yours is if you'll do that.
So I would like to say this, I understand that there's a lot of requests out there and the ladies are overburdened.
Just reach out to me tomorrow morning, and I'll figure out where it is.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Who's next?
Tabitha had her hand up. Tabitha, did you?
Remember, everybody, before you start, Tabitha, just a second. Everybody, past the second person on this side of the room, I cannot see you, so please step out in the aisle and wave, okay? Randy, is your hand up?
It's not, but it will be when...
Okay, do you want to be next?
Sure.
Okay. And commissioners, y'all help me with this, okay? Because I cannot see them.
Yes, so my understanding is, so then Stan, Sunday.
Who?
Name. Oh, Tabitha, Tabitha Howard, H-O-W-A-R-D. So my understanding is that Chance Powell, you are his direct boss, you're his boss. So my, I'm having some issues with Sandeston once again, and with that, I'm having some issues, and also with the code complaints with Tony Corman, some things were sent illegal. I guess, are you Tony's boss, correct? How do I get this done? Because actually, Brad, thank you very much, when you were talking about Dan Currie not doing much, you know what, I see Dan Currie all the time at the parks, he's doing, oh, sorry about that, Tony. Well, I don't see much going on over here with going to parks or anything. Thank you very much, Dan, for what you're doing. I really appreciate that, and I'm glad that you brought that up about follow-through and everything, Brad, because back in March 9th, 2021, actually, you were setting up here, Stan, because when I go back and watch the videos, and we were supposed to be getting something in 60 days from Sandeston, they promised that to Alan Osborne right here, and later on, back in February, I came up, or no, it was in January sometime, and Brad, you were so kind to say, "You know what, it's been..." Sorry about that, Tony.
Hold on, I want to hear what she's got to say.
Well, yeah, well, I'm going to look at Brad, because that's who I'm talking to, not you, Tony, sorry about that, because your feelings hurt. So, well, Brad, you told me that you would get that to me, we were supposed to get that back, and I never did. Do you recall that? In February, I thought it was going to be on the agenda. You told me that it was insane that I had not gotten that back, and you promised that I would, that I would get that back. I'll go find the meeting, that's what I was trying to find, the meeting date, and actually pull it up and play it on my phone.
I do remember mentioning it to someone.
You mentioned it right here in front of everybody, and it's on the record. I can find it, and we've been waiting since March 9th, 2021, and I appreciate how you thought that was ridiculous, because it really was, Brad, and...
Clay, were there some implications with Sandeston that prohibited us from addressing some of these?
Ultimately, yes.
And they all fall understand, though, because Chance, because I just got a response back, because now they're putting water directly into the bay, and Chance agreed that it was okay to do it, and I have other things that say otherwise.
Can we talk about this?
From Dr. Harper's report. Well, it all falls understand right here.
It's still pending litigation.
But this is Stan, he's the boss, and he's the boss that looks at Sandeston, of making sure things go a certain way.
That's a question, Mr. Chair.
Like, that's the way I'm seeing it right now.
Listen, first of all, we were, been advised by our attorney that we could not respond to these issues, so that's what it is. It's not Stan's fault when the attorney says, "It's not my fault, it's not Brad's fault."
So now you're saying it's Clay's fault?
No, it's not anybody's fault.
Well, that's what you just said. I think I heard it was Clay's fault, not Stan's fault.
I said, Clay had advised us that we could not talk about this, and when he advised us...
Well, I think we need to talk about it, it's been going on for a long time.
We do when the pending litigation's over with. That's it.
I think, Clay, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's to your advantage that we not discuss it, right?
Very, that is a very possible interpretation that one could draw. It benefits, sometimes it's to the benefit of the person raising the issue, not us. We are sometimes harmed by our own policy in this regard.
And, Mr. Chairman, and not to take away from our time, but can we stay away from employees? I mean, Mr. Powell is not the subject of this.
That's my fault.
Well, Mr. Powell, he is an engineer, and he should put the stamp on something. That's what engineers do, and that is his job. That's one of his job requirements, is to stamp things. Sorry.
That's enough. Randy, please state and spell your name, okay?
Randy Lightner, L-I-G-H-T-N-E-R. Most importantly, I want to apologize to Mr. Atkinson and Ms. Johns earlier for pushing the issue on who was at the meeting, but there are people, no one in this room, like some of you think, but it was in people's minds that Mr. Sunday was there, and honestly, I didn't know what the answer was, but whether he was or wasn't, I thought it was important before we got... it was important before we got to hear that that correct answer be heard. So, I wasn't trying to be disrespectful to legal advice, but that's why I wanted to make sure that we at least got that much of who was there. As for the rest of it, the only issues that I have, Stan, I've come here and said it before, he's been wonderful to me over the years when he's working at the sheriff's office, different places. He's always helped me when I've needed help. The issues that I have, and I don't want to beat dead horses, but the issues that I have, how long the HR issues drag on? There was no need in it carrying on that long. It feels like nothing was done about it until it was forced by the public. I look at the Blackstone, the Blackstone Pud, which clearly was years out of date and years expired when it was issued. And I say clearly, sure looked like it to me. Everything anyone told me was, yes, it was expired from the time it was issued, and that was not addressed. That wasn't dealt with.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, real quick. Keep her time going. When you brought that...
Well, it's the train of thought you mess with more than the time, but go ahead. I'm old.
I am too.
Yeah, me too. When you introduced that into the discussion, I was intrigued by that. And I asked the question immediately on the spot. I asked Mr. Atkinson, I said, is what she's saying true? And he said, Mr. Carpenter will answer that, and he will provide an answer. And Mr. Carpenter came up, and to this day, I don't really remember if he gave me an answer...
I'm not going to stand up here and throw people under the bus, but I got the answer. I got the answer from legal counsel.
Randy, let's don't talk over each other, okay? Let him talk, and then I'll give you time.
Well, this is my three minutes. I'm the one being talked over, talking to the wrong person.
Put it back to 30, 1:30.
That's fine. That's fine. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that when you brought that up, I was fascinated by that because I had no idea that it was that way. I posted to counsel, and then he, counsel, said that Mr. Carpenter was going to provide an answer. And he did.
And him, he didn't...
I didn't understand it, but he did.
Well, he just basically said it's good because I want it to be good, pretty much, was the answer. And that's my issue. That was an acceptable answer. And it moved on, and nothing was done. And so, with that being said, there were, we all know with the planning director that there were multiple issues. And it just comes to a point to me where it doesn't seem like it's right to allow the things that happened in HR to happen and the person be able to resign. No big deal whether they were forced to resign or not. They get to move on. No implications, no lesson learned for the next one coming along. Planning director got to retire, far as I know, getting full retirement benefits. What's to, what kind of lesson is being taught to the next one to come along? And these are my issues. That's just two. I'm not going to sit here and go on all day, but it's not personal for me. I've always thought the world of Stan. I hate that we're here right now. But those are my issues. And I'll say in closing, if someone else was tying the administrator's hands, and the only way he could get rid of at least those last two employees was the way that it happened, then maybe you're making the wrong decision today. But if he had full authority and full capability to administer harsher punishments than what he did and set better examples, then you're not making the wrong decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
The Blackstone thing, that's a, I mean, we get bang on Ms. Howard about pending litigation at Sandeston. Isn't Blackstone pending litigation too?
Correct. However, the issue of whether the PUD was expired or not is not part of that litigation. So, since we were going to have that comment, and Commissioner Drake interjected, I figure we'd let that get resolved. Terms of the actual project and discussion of it, no, it is still pending litigation. While the county has not been ordered to respond, it is a petition for research. She already filed against us.
Okay.
I just wanted to be fair.
Anyone else? For the record, Alan Osborne. I've been in a lot of leadership positions, and I've worked for a lot of great leaders, and we don't have one right now. That's just all there is because he's creating a culture that it's okay to screw up and you won't be punished. There's no accountability. I can't, I can't, I had to ask Commissioner Drake over a year and a half ago what to do about it. He told me to take it to Stan. Stan told me he would deal with it, and I got fed up with it after a long time. He's been given plenty of evidence. He absolutely could have held Mac responsible. Commissioner Johns wrote an affidavit where Mac made fun of it. And that culture is still here. It's still here, every bit of it. And that crap about a family, I don't think there's a one of you have dumped out your wallet for what a staff did that was wrong, absolutely wrong. And we've been the victim of it out here. And I hate that y'all gave up control of your directors. You never should have. No commander should ever. And that's what y'all have been elected to be here. You're not here to make the staff happy. You're here to make the constituents happy. You're here to make sure standards are enforced. And standards aren't being enforced, and he knows it. He's lied to me. I'll say it myself. And he hadn't held those people accountable. He's hired people that he has past relationships with it, and we know it. And it's not, oh, you can't do this. And I'm not going to listen to that stuff about God and throwing stones because my house got stones thrown through it. I asked simply, unpersonally, for the law to be enforced and the ordinance to be enforced, and you sit there in defiance. I came up here and the stuff I can't talk about. So, Mr. Atkinson said I can talk about getting the code enforced, and now I've spent two years. You've got staff that can't read a single paragraph out of a page from the state letters. Tabitha's turned that stuff in at ad nauseam, and she gets up there. You guys need to read your own development orders. You say you're not in daily business, and half the stuff y'all just said is daily business, and you're expected to do it. So, just because that grand jury was what it was, your job is for the people. And my codes aren't being enforced, and you're getting litigation, and the litigation that you can't talk about, you're going to get a bunch more that you don't even know about yet because the people haven't realized what's happened. If you want to stop the litigation, you will change the court culture of leadership in this county. And this stuff about bringing God into it, God sees what some of y'all are doing, and it ain't good. They know what your vices are. They know what you've said. I gave Mr. Drake personally a thumb drive of all this stuff way before the election. He said he was going to do something with it, and Stan was part of the solution, and the problem is still there. Mac was a problem not dealt with. HR was a problem not dealt with. And you sent a message to all those people, just like when you didn't follow policy when Tony wanted Blue to speak. There was no motion. That's right. You broke the policy, Mr. Anderson. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
There's somebody in the back.
Okay, Kevin Roark, I think.
Mr. Osborne.
Come on. Come on, Mr. Roark.
Come on, Kevin. Kevin, you can come on up. Let him say something before you start.
Go ahead. I don't mind passionate debate. I don't mind trying to work to a solution. I want to ask you something.
Okay. Okay. I'll come up. Ain't no problem.
What is? Did you know my mother?
No. Did you know mine?
Did you make a comment that when my mother passed away, that you hoped that she suffered severely from the cancer that she died from? Did you or did you not say that?
No, that's not part of this. So, I'm going to tell you something. I came up there and did...
You did, or you did not?
Now, you're not going to, I know what I said. You know what I said? You use that as a crutch for half your life is what I said, and you still are. And I'll tell you that in front of anybody. You lied to me since you called me up here. You take that Bible and you do something else with it because it ain't God's favor. You know what I'm asking for. Have you seen the documents? Don't you sit in here and do that to me. Don't you tell me about what I've been... He talked to me. That's enough. That's his answer.
Wow.
You're sorry.
Wow. That's leadership.
Yeah. And you ain't done it.
Real quick, Mr. Roark, on that note, on the first thing that you brought forward, Mr. Osborne, was an email.
I can't answer you no more, so stop. Talk to the chair. You can talk, but don't ask him a question.
The email that he's referencing, I passed along to Mr. Sunday. Now, Mr. Sunday, where was that email? Where did that end up?
Every email, every complaint that has been originated by Mr. Osborne and sent to me, or sent to me from a commissioner, has been sent to code enforcement. And they have assured me that they have adequately investigated each complaint that where there was, where there was an issue to be investigated. That's according to Mr. Corman and Mr. Gaining.
Let's keep it on the, Mr. Roark, I'm sorry you have to wait.
Kevin Rowley for the record, R O L L E. I'll try and take this down a notch a little bit.
Evil, evil, evil.
Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Can you hear back there? I want to talk about...
I'm sorry, wait a minute. Mr. Chair, can we take five and then give him his full time and even maybe some extra?
Let's take five minutes.
Okay. Sorry, Kevin.
No, no. I don't.[1264.23]
Yeah, no problem. Kevin Rowley, R-O-L-L-E for the record. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'm going to address the body as a whole, but I will not be addressing any individual because I think we've had enough of that for now. Ladies and gentlemen, we need to be looking to the future. Everyone knows and everyone sees that we've had problems in this county going way back through various BCCs. We've had complaints, and some legitimate and some not, about leadership and problems with leadership. Leadership has to start somewhere. As the elected body of Walton County, it is incumbent upon you to figure it out and set that course. And you do that through policies, legislation, ordinances. Ordinances that we've been sorely lacking. Ordinances in relation to the county administrator, the county attorney, the CFO, the three positions you hire have nothing on the books. We can talk all day about how to hold these positions accountable and what we deem to be appropriate or inappropriate leadership. But how do you do so when you haven't done something as fundamental as establishing ordinances and policies specific to those issues? Every citizen in this county, I think fast approaching 100,000, we all have our issues. We all have our complaints. We all have our desires and dreams. And we all would like to be able to come to you as our elected representatives and say, my issue is the most important. I don't envy you at all that massive responsibility you've taken on to try and be responsible for the happiness of everyone in this county. But if you're going to tackle that, you need to do that through the means that are set forth to you to do that. And it's not to get into debates with everybody about one person's leadership or another person's. It's about setting the roadmap, charting the course, and using your policies and abilities to do that, and working together to make that happen. Ordinances that have been sitting there apparently for a great deal of time. You can say, hey, let's hold this person responsible for us not having that ordinance. But whose responsibility ultimately is that? That sits with y'all, okay? And you can do that. You can direct staff. You do it all the time on other issues. If there's an ordinance that you, as an elected body and as a legislative body, need to pass, hold them to it. Two meetings from now, that will be brought back. That is within your power. Focus on everyone. Don't focus on special interests and issues of the day and of the moment and that are dramatic. Focus on legislating and setting the roadmap for the future, not the past. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anyone else?
Nope.
Don't say anyone.
Okay, come up.
For the record, my name is Tammy Sunday, S-U-N-D-A-Y. Brad, we're going to talk about family? Yes.
We're not asking the board questions.
Okay, well, he felt that it was okay to ask Mr. Osborne about family, so I'm just opening, I'm going through the door that has been previously opened.
We are not discussing yours and Mr. Sunday's personal life.
Mr. Anderson?
Ms. Sunday, that's policy.
You've not heard one thing that I've had to say yet.
I just want you to...
I hear you. I hear you, okay? I got you. I've got you, okay? Now, Mr. Brad, you started out saying, do you know my mother? Okay? I posed that question right back to you. Do you know my mother?
I can tell you this, Ms. Sunday, I've never said anything hateful, hurtful, or derogatory about any of your family.
Okay, fair enough. My mother died of can...
Did you, go ahead.
My mother died of cancer as well, okay? So, I understand. And if you're trying to draw sympathy from your mother, then you know what? My mother died of cancer. My father died of a heart attack, and I'm an only child. So, right now, I'm going through the toughest time of my entire life alone, Mr. Drake, alone. Do you know what that feels like? And do you know what it feels like to sit here and listen to you give your speech, give your sermon about forgiveness and about throwing stones? Well, you know what? The sermon that you preached, you forgot a part. So, let me help you with the last part, okay?
This part of the policy discussion...
Well, bringing up mothers wasn't part of the policy either. So, I mean, are you going to, you're going to, you're going to be selective?
You all opened the door. You opened the door for the preaching, so by God, I've brought my Bible.
Ms. Sunday, if you will please just address your comments directly to the chair or to the board as a whole rather than individual.
Okay, got you. Yes, sir.
If she steps out of the standard policy, you have the gavel, Mr. Chair.
So, I believe you were preaching on John eight, four through 11, on the stalling of the woman. So, if we go down to verse 11, it also says, go now and leave your life of sin. Other words, sin no more. And I believe it's very clear that I'm not the only damn one in this room that thinks that that has not happened. Now, if this board intends to tolerate the activity of your acting administrator that is the face of your organization...
That's it. That's it. You're not, you're not getting into that.
Okay, so we'll, we'll talk in generalities. Ms. Johns brought up the point earlier that says that employees that are walking about are the billboard for your organization. What does that say about your organization? Yes, Mr. Anderson? What does it say about you? And you're, you're condoning such behavior. I think it is a poor moral compass, to say the least.
That's it.
So, you're going to shut me down because you don't like what I have to say?
I don't, we're talking about Mr. Sunday's job performance.
Yes, how can he perform his job to the best of his ability when it's going to put you all in litigation every damn time that he tries to reprimand a subordinate? And that subordinate comes to you, Mr. Anderson, and says, how can you allow me to be chastised by the highest person in your organization when you tolerate the wrongdoing?
You through?
I guess I am since my time's up, but I have a hell of a lot more that I have to say.
Well, say it in court.
I'll take that as an invitation and challenge accepted.
Anyone else? Seeing that one, we have a motion on the floor, second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
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 Three to two.
We can pass the gavel back down, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Gladwell, you were...
But I do have a, I do want to make a statement. Mr. Curry started this with this ain't personal, and he's right, this is not personal. But we can't continue like this as a county. We got to move on. And unfortunately, the backbiting between staff is not serving us well. And I mean, when the chairman and the vice chairman both say that they want a change, it's hard not to move on. So, that's why I voted the way I voted.
Thank you for Commissioner McLeodwell. Okay, did you have anything else you want to say? You're the next one on the agenda.
I think we've had Saul said enough.
Okay, well, I think Mr. Drake is, Commissioner Drake, you're up next with an add-on that you have for county attorney position. But keep in mind, there's no word about motion in there, so no motion will be accepted.
I'm glad you, I'm glad you brought that up because agenda items should not be editorialized. They should not be, they should be succinct. So, just because it doesn't say motion doesn't prohibit. Every agenda item, there is an expectation that business can be conducted.
It's always been the case since I've been on this board that you had to put the word motion on there or motion and discussion in order for a motion to be made. That's the way this board has run since I've been on it.
What's the policy?
Since I've been on it, that's been the policy.
I'll address that. Again, I think I've had this comment before. If somebody wants to make a motion that pertains to me, I'll leave that up to the board. But I will read the board's policy in writing from the June 8, 2021 meeting. Motion by Commissioner Gladwell, second by Commissioner McCormick to approve the recommendations as follows, colon, setting the regular meeting agenda item cutoff time as 11:00 a.m. the Thursday before each scheduled regular meeting, semicolon. Anything received after that time will be considered an add-on and to require all add-ons needing action to be accompanied by a statement of action to be taken. Five oh by the following votes, ayes, Chairman Nick Barker, McCormick, Gladwell, and Anderson. That is what the board has called, and perhaps colloquially, the Tusa Rule because it came in the wake of the termination of Jay Tusa on an item that read TDC Director. That's the board's, that's the board's adopted policy on add-on items. But again, I'll stand by whatever the board wishes to do. I don't want, if an item concerns my position, for someone to think that I'm articulating a policy for my own benefit or protection. But that isn't the June 8, 2021 adopted minutes, and I believe that was read verbatim.
Well, here's what I want to do, Mr. Atkinson, and I called you last night. And I shared with you directly what my intentions were, was to pick up the discussion on where we are with the full-time county attorney position. And you were very kind and gracious, and I appreciate that. What I'm trying to point out here is the disgust and the disdain that I have in this room with the corruption and the hypocrisy. Corruption feeds hypocrisy. Hypocrisy feeds corruption. And so many people, they get out there on the stump when they want to sit in this chair and they talk about wanting to clean it up. You know, I talk about Trump a lot because I like his policies. And like him or not, he said what he was going to do when he became president, and he's doing it. Now, whether you like what he does or not, we all have our opinions, but he said he was going to do something, and he's doing it. So, all of us, we get out there on the stump and we talk about what we want to do, what we want to accomplish when we get up here on the board. And then sometimes when we get elected, things change. They're no longer a priority. It was just, it was just campaign trail fodder. I don't want us to be in this position that we're in. I hate this, this fighting. I hate this, this hatred, this evil that permeates throughout the county. But I counted up earlier, I'm looking out here in this audience and up here on the board, and I counted 11 people, Mr. Atkinson, that when I was squarely in the middle of assisting with the vacated seat that I'm now occupying, that I'm now sitting in, there are 11 people in this room that wanted to know one thing. Whoever got on this board was going to terminate the county attorney. There are 11 of them in this room. Now, turn the page. Well, in fact, Mr. Curry, on March the 3rd, 2024, on Facebook, said, just curious, how many updates have we had at BCC meetings on the interim county attorney position? Why are we not talking about this at every meeting as an agenda item? Are we not working on finding our own in-house attorney? Are we advertising in more places than maybe Craigslist? This should be an agenda item at every meeting as well as the interim county admin position until we have secured folks at both positions as permanents, not interims. Being an attorney for just about every entity in Walton, in my opinion, is conflicted. Mr. Atkins, I've never had any problems with you. We have, we have had a good working relationship. I told you last night, you're a brilliant attorney. I do maintain that I believe that conflicts exist. I don't like it. We're, we're working together as a board, but that's not what's happening right now. This, this, this whole, this, this room has turned into an arena for theatrics, and it's just, it's disgusting. And what's disgusting is the hypocrisy. Now, I don't know, Mr. Curry, if you've changed your mind, if you wholeheartedly believed that, once you got into office, you never put that on the agenda. So, I would ask is, were you, was that just campaign fodder? Were you just trying to appease a crowd by making that statement? Because Clay is a polarizing figure. We're all polarizing at times. But you never, you never followed through with it.
Can I respond?
In just a minute. But then there were the people that, before I even got here, that were insistent that change needed to be made, change needed to be made. But now, it's a new day, and the alignment is now back the opposite. Why is that? Something happened, something changed. What happened? Corruption. Because there's always somebody at the head. And so, if you philosophically and in your heart, you believe passionately about an issue, but then you're led to think differently and everybody joins along, it's corruption. And all of us say we want to fight corruption, and it's just over and over. Nobody does. Nobody wants to be honest, have integrity.
That's not true at all. I don't appreciate that one bit. Not one bit. I do not appreciate that one bit.
It absolutely is appalling at the hypocrisy.
May I?
Yes, you may. Go right ahead.
I wrote every word that you said. I was on that side of the fence. I think earlier tonight, I said, when I got elected, it would only be responsible of me to hit the reset button. Damn, Brad, the county put a trespass warrant on me on your bridge. Don't you think I would have had, had an issue with all the, and I don't. I came in, I hit the reset button. I'm like, look, I need to give the benefit of the doubt on this side of the fence. And I've had several conversations with Mr. Atkinson. And he'll tell you. I said, look, since there's no attorneys lining out the door over here, maybe we need to renegotiate your contract. He doesn't disagree. He even said that he can't be the single attorney here because he either did, I can't, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but didn't want to, or the, I don't know. In other words, he wanted to put a group of attorneys together, and then he ride off into sunset at some other time. That is what we had several conversations about. I have no problem with that. And if that makes me a hypocrite, now, I guess I'm a hypocrite. I mean, we're all up here hypocrites, if you want to, if you want to boil it down. I mean, I mashed a video together not too long ago that proved it, undoubtedly proved it. But that went away like it was nothing. Oh, that's just normal day-to-day stuff, you know, we're, you know, it's status quo. But I didn't hear you say any of this, what you said about the county administrator position today than the three meetings that I stayed up till 3:30 in the morning and watched about Quinn Robertson. I don't know where the Commissioner Drake was then that's here today. I didn't hear no sermons. I didn't hear no Lord. I didn't hear no glass houses. I didn't hear any of that stuff when it was the Quinn time. But, and I know there's some relationships here. I get it. You know what? You go to school together, you go have some beers together, you whatever. I get it. I get it. But again, it boils down to business. This is not personal. You keep bringing it up like it's personal. It's not. We need to run this county like a business, period, period. For so long, we have just wrote checks. I mean, I sit in TDC meetings where the answer was, well, we've always wrote a check for 140 grand to have, have our marketing firm ask another marketing firm for something that another marketing firm already told us. Well, that's what we do all the time. What's wrong with that? This is a business. We need to start acting like it is. We need to start acting like it is. Nothing personal. You know, guys want to go out and have beers, whatever. I don't care. Whatever you do outside is your own business. But what happens inside this is their business and our business.
Well, I just want to say, Stan Sunday told me over a year ago, he wanted a deputy. I've not seen any movement towards a deputy. He wasted $100,000 in that HR debacle. There just, the list goes on and on. This is nothing personal with me either, and I do not for one second appreciate you calling me corrupt. There's not a corrupt bone in my body. But you were talking about us, us. I'm part of us.
No, I'm talking about everywhere.
Well, I'm not corrupt. I've never been corrupt. I'm not ever going to be corrupt.
I believe that.
I think for myself, and I just want to do the right thing. And this does need to be run by, like a business. It really does. We cannot continue to just, we have so many positions that are unfilled, that are very important positions. We can't continue on like that. We can't. We need a county administrator, we need a deputy, we need a planning person, we need an executive TDC guy. There are so many positions that we need to fill desperately. We're just kind of like a dead fish flopping around. I mean, it's really ridiculous. And so it's nothing personal to anybody. I feel bad for Mrs. Sunday not being able to speak her piece, and there's a lot of things that she wanted to say that she's not able to say. But the things that she had to say would really make you realize that we need somebody strong and good and focused on work in that position. And so I just want to do the right thing for the county as a whole. I think the people that work for the county deserve a good, strong leader, someone that doesn't micromanage them, someone that allows them to do their job and supports them and supports their needs. That's what we need, you know? So I just, I personally just want to do the right thing for this entire county, from the north end to the south end, through the middle, all the way through and through. And I don't feel like we're doing it. So.
I didn't want to put words in your mouth, Mr. Atkinson. Did you want to help me out with our conversations about renegotiating your contract?
I've told you that. I've said all along that when we negotiated this, it was meant to be something different. Our initial proposals to the county were something that I felt would be a very different approach, that would have been more consistent with the budgeted amounts to the position. And at the time, frankly, I disagreed with my father in that discussion when he was prepared to do that. And frankly, it's cost the county more money and made me more money. But I told you that, you know, if the opportunity ever presented itself, and that's what this Board desired to do, I was more than happy to sit down and negotiate in good faith with the Board to have something that would work financially for the Board and make sense in the grand scheme of things. But I have said that, no, I'm not in a position, for a variety of reasons, to be a single full-time employee of the county. That has to do with my law practice, my other business interests and ventures that have nothing to do with the county or the city governments. But with that being said, yes, my goal, Commissioner Curry, and I think everybody's heard me say that, is that I believe the county is best served by building an in-house law firm of a number of attorneys to handle its litigation needs, its day-to-day activities, without having to farm out vast resources. And I stand committing to do that, as long as the Board wishes for me to do that. I respect Commissioner Drake's position. He explained to me exactly what he said, and so I thank him for calling me and talking to me. And I'll say, Commissioner Drake, I do understand if your position, or anybody's position is, they are not comfortable with my representation of other parties, be it private practice, civil litigation, criminal defense, or other governmental clients. I do understand that, and you have every right to make that decision. You're the boss. To the point of conflicts, I would be remiss if I did not say that that was something we vetted very carefully before we took this position. The county and the cities, and none of my clients have been in litigation since I have been here. We certainly have put safeguards in place that would avoid it. And over a year ago, a Florida bar complaint was filed asserting that it was, in fact, a conflict of interest, that the bar dismissed without any finding of cause as to any of those allegations. So I will stand by my prior position there. Your opinion is, as the elected official and the boss, I full well respect that. And so I will make the comment about conflicts only because there are technical legal conflicts of interest under the bar cannons, and there can be, I just don't like the other side of it and it's not being a true conflict. And I can respect the difference between those, and I appreciate you telling me that. But thank you all.
Well, you know, it's no secret that I voted once to remove you, and the second time, I seconded someone wanting to remove you. At that time, I thought that was the right thing to do. Right now, I just don't think it's the right thing to do because of all the lack that we have in the county right now, with all the positions that we have that are vacant. I just, as to Commissioner Drake's point earlier, you're a brilliant attorney, and you're hard to replace. And, you know, I wish that you weren't on every other Board in the county, but, you know, it is what it is. So I don't think we're at a time and place right now with all the phrase in this county to lose you at this point. So.
Why did we decide about a motion?
We no motion.
Well, let me, I want to clarify that. Even if I had the ability to make a motion, Clay, I want you to know, I did not intend to do that. I wanted to go through this exercise, sir, so you would know. You have the support of all five members of this Board. All five want you here. I wanted to expose the hypocrisy, though, because I'm tired of it. I hate the hypocrisy. I'm tired of all this crap. But I wanted you to know that months ago, you didn't have the support. It was a very, during that time of the appointment, people everywhere wanted to know whether or not you were going to be gone or not. In fact, someone called me, or I called them, and they asked me a couple of questions. And one was whether or not I intended to fire you. And I told that person, I said, "I'm going to hear the evidence on both sides. If there's a justification for it, then we'll talk about it. If there's not, then we won't." I want you to know, you're not going anywhere. But last night, I received a text message. Well, last night, I decided to have this discussion about your position. So I asked for it to be added on to the agenda as a late item, add-on. Within one hour, at, it was around 10 something PM Eastern Time, I received a text message from a lobbyist. A lobbyist for the City of Freeport, for the City of Defeniac Springs, and the Walton County Sheriff's Department. And that text message was my job description.
That's what you told me, yes, sir.
I felt like that was a threat.
And you and I talked about it, and I believe I gave you advice of how I would handle that with the state of Florida.
Which job? What job?
My daily job.
Your daily job.
Not the county committee job.
No, nothing else other than a copy of my job description at 10 o'clock at night, an hour after.
That ain't appropriate.
It is not. It is not.
Understood.
But I want every commissioner to know, if it's rightly so, I'm going to have your back. But this, nobody, it doesn't seem, and I don't want to get you wadded up, but it just doesn't seem like people want to govern for what's best. It's governing for sides, or caucuses, or divisions. And it's not doing the citizens a bit of good, and it's not doing our staff a bit of good. But I wanted to get that off my plate, and I do trust your advice. I think that we're well-served here.
Thank you for the kind words.
I'll move on to my other item if I can, Madam Chair. Okay, so the last thing that I have is that, in all of this, I want us to have some accountability. Kids are tested at school. In the workplace, Mr. Roar, you're probably familiar with accountability practices within a corp. I want to ask our employees, our staff, our team members, to grade us. I want to know what we're good at, what we're not, where we're deficient, where we can get stronger. And I want to design an instrument, I don't plan on making any motions tonight, but I would like to be able to allow our staff to express to us where they think that we're being helpful, where we could improve, and it would be done anonymously, so that they could make recommendations or let us know. A lot of times, staff's scared to tell us anything because they're worried about, you know, if they speak up, they're going to lose their job or something or other. And I'd like to create an anonymous method for people to evaluate our performances and our responsibilities and what we're doing to run the organization and ascertain some feedback, so.
It's about 360 feedback.
Okay, well, maybe, in the interim, I'll reach out to you, Todd, maybe you've got some ideas that could be helpful.
The 360 feedback is for your peers.
Well, you can go plug one of those.
Whatever it is, I like the idea.
It's a great idea. Sorry to speak from the back.
That's it. That's all I have.
Okay. The only thing I have on here, I'm always at the tail end when everybody's wore out, is, and I'm not going to belabor this at all, it's just I wanted to bring up parking garages, because, you know, as I've stated before, we've bought a lot of property for parking garages, and it's just getting really, really bad, and we've got to move forward. We've got to start. We've got to make that move to get something going and find somebody to build a parking garage. So whatever it takes to get going and get moving forward, we can't wait any longer. I've been asking for this for two and a half years, and I want to see something get done, some movement in the right direction for a parking garage. The Mead property is sitting there, and it's prime, it's ready, and that's what we bought it for five years ago or whenever we bought it. So that's all I'm going to say about that. Public comments? Anyone? Randy.
Commissioner Drake, when everybody, and I mean, everybody, was just done with you, I was still hanging on. I was still, he's going to pull it together, he's going to support it to you as hard and as long as I could. And all I see anymore is just constant, nonstop up here belittling and berating anyone and everyone you can and using the name of the Lord to do it. It's gone too far. It's too much. Maybe, I don't think you mean to do it. I'm not going to ask you, but if you don't, maybe you should start going back and watching meetings. And I really don't think that you're the kind of person you're portraying here. And I don't think you could have fooled me that much for this long. I don't know what's going on, but it is not necessarily hypocrisy. When you change your opinion, you change your mind, you, in my case, I've come along and I've learned some things along the way. It wasn't hypocrisy when I started changing my views on you. What made me change my views on you, we just had this discussion on the break, where you told me you did not know that the way that Blackstone D.O. was written, you did not know that it was written as expired, that it was no good. That was your district. It's the biggest thing that ever has and probably ever will come along in your district. And you told me you didn't read the first two sentences of the D.O., because that's where I found it. That's what's changed my opinion. That's what's changed my mind. It's not hypocrisy. It's not being led by other people. That's the biggest joke in the world for anybody that does me. Nobody leads me. I've got my own mind, I've got my own mouth. I'm not led by anybody, anytime, anywhere. I change my mind based on the things that I see. I change my mind based on what I see happening. As far as Clay, no, I don't think that Clay should be the attorney for every municipality in the county. No, I don't think we should be paying out the kazoo. No, I don't think now's a good time to get rid of him. I think he does a phenomenal job. If he would take the job, I think everybody would be happy. So don't constantly sit up here trying to turn things into things they are not. People have the right to change their mind. People have the right to watch and see things, just like I stood up here and said about the county administrator. If some of you had his hands tied so he couldn't do his job, then y'all don't need to fire him, it's your fault. But if you didn't, he just wasn't doing it. That's on him. That's not hypocrisy. That's I watched, I saw. Y'all ain't doing your job.
Thank you, Randy.
Anything you want to say?
Nope. Thank you. Mr. Roar. Roar Arc.
Roar.
I don't know why it's hard.
So just a couple of things from earlier, back to the plat feet. Can we put some Band-Aids? Can we do something? I mean, we do not have, I'm sorry, I don't know everyone's name, I think his name is Sean, but can we have, can we put a moratorium on approving anything until you guys change the land development code or remove that language about the property versus the money?
We can put that on next time.
And at the very least, that Melissa, as the CFO, as the controller of all financial controls, she is, I mean, she has to sign off on everything. She should sign off on everything.
We're working on that. There's a bill before the Governor, Senate Bill 180, that restricts moratoria based on a variety of things. I could talk to you more about it later. So no short answers, moratoria are off the table, because if we do it, it's retroactive and it gets undone immediately. But we have talked to planning. Melissa is actively engaging with planning about both the mobility fee, and planning is working on a rec fee. We are absolutely looking at this issue. What happened here is something we're not going to allow to continue to happen, nor do we expect to operate under the same policy.
And are we going to need to go back? I'll let you guys figure out the investigation. I just think you should go further back in time and figure out what happened, because we learn things from history, and we can't have history repeat itself over and over and over again. So, and there was something else, but good Lord. Like, today's a long day. At the end of the day, this isn't us versus them thing. This is a team. I don't like the word employee. I hate it. I'm not an employee of anyone. I'm a team member. I've used that for 25, 30 years, because everybody needs to function as a team, and we're only as strong as the weakest link of our team. So at the end of the day, it's not employees, it's all about leadership. And you guys, everyone sitting up here today, and some of the guys in the back, you're the leaders and set the standard. And the corruption thing, Mr. Brad, that you used, sometimes we have to call a spade a spade, and what I saw with that $1 million, that's criminal. So there's other things that should have occurred with the HR investigation. Why you guys didn't do an investigation is on you, but I believe, Mr. Atkinson, Attorney Atkinson, that when you have a whistleblower complain about being threatened and harassed and retaliated, that an investigation is not optional, it's a requirement. At least it is where I come from, and based on the law that I read over the last six or seven months. And that still has not happened, and it still needs to happen, and it has to happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kevin?
Ladies and gentlemen, y'all came to a decision today, and my personal opinions aside, I mean, I'm disappointed, but when are we going to start to look forward instead of repeating the mistakes of the past? This county's been going through county administrators at a rate that is unacceptable in any organization that has the goal of long-term progress and building something for the future for the citizens. I don't like the term that I keep getting or hearing thrown around, that this is a business. It's not a business. Sure, there's aspects of it, but just as an example, and Melissa, sorry, just correct me if I'm wrong, we balance a budget, we don't look for a profit margin, correct? Okay. So that's a difference. Yes, we do a budget, and yes, there's Yes, we do a budget, and yes, there's responsibility that comes with the tax money, but it's not a business. It is different, and there are nuances to that. You are a legislative board, and I'm sorry I keep harping on this, but I think it is important enough to do so. Personalities, drama, people's jobs, people's livelihood, are used as currency so often, virtually every meeting. You may not be able to control what goes on on social media, but you can control what happens in this room, and you can control the means with which you chart that course for the future. Personalities and personal opinions and personal agendas are why this decision was made today, and I think that's unfortunate. But there is something you can do about it. You have an ordinance in front of you, or coming up in front of you for the county administrator. Chart a course before you find your next county administrator. Start building things the right way. Start taking responsibility for those processes, and start protecting your employees and protecting the citizens from all of this. This isn't how it should be done. You know how it should be done. Let's focus there. Thank you.
Thank you. Tabitha?
Two seconds to, on Kevin.
Yes, go ahead.
Kim, will we give direction, Mr. Clay, on talking about what Kevin just said about the ordinance with your position, the county administrator and the CFO? Can we begin that process with, with direction?
The county administrator ordinance is coming back to you at the second meeting of this month.
Does that include Melissa and yours?
No, but if that's what you want to see, is something that mirrors other counties' CFO and county attorney ones, we can certainly do that, and I'll start working on that as well.
I'd say.
I'll have a draft for you at your next meeting. And we won't have the advertising available, because we would have to have full advertising, but I'll gladly do that.
I think it's a good start, if we start at the top and work our way down.
Thank you. Okay, Tabitha?
Yes, Tabitha Howard, H-I-W-A-R-D. Actually, I kind of have something that I wanted to say earlier, but I just kind of went nuts. But I am, I'm a mom, and I want my children to be happy all the time. But also, they're not going to be happy if they're not effective. So who cares about employees' happiness? What, what should be focused on is effectiveness, because with that, you will be happy, you know, if, if you do your job right. Happy and ineffective, happy and ineffective is bad. Effectiveness should be the only measure of an employee. And, oh, Brad Drake, um, this is not supposed to be a family, but I understand why you think that because of all the nepotism. Who gives a crap about a fun Christmas party? We have the largest per capita annual spend in Florida, and I can't get a damn code complaint acted upon. We need change, less spending, more effectiveness and leadership that delivers that. We need it now. Period.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We do need, we need you right now, Clay, because it's a mess.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
We have a, meeting is adjourned.